Okay. I tell you what.
Okay. I will be right back, I think. I'm sorry.
Every school order of education study session, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Shirley, can we have a roll call, please?
Troy Carr.
Here.
Jamie Clapham.
Here.
Christine Stephenson.
Here.
Donna Moore.
Here.
Michael Berkland.
Here.
Walt Swan.
Here.
Katie Urban.
Here.
All right. Invite everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
So moved.
If consecutive, hold agenda, be no discussion, all in favor, signify by hand, aye?
Aye.
It's on now. Those opposed, please say no. All right. Motion carries. At this time, we're having open forum. We have three tonight, so each person will have five minutes. First up is Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening, board. My name is Florence Thompson. I'm president of South Dakota Parents Involved in Education. And I'm a retired school psychologist with over forty years' experience in the schools as a psychologist. I'm just here tonight. I want to address the subject of the election that we just had for school board. There were a lot of irregularities in the Meade County balloting and et cetera. And I believe that there is definitely a need for a new election for the Meade County voters who were, may have been disenfranchised due to a number of irregularities. And so, just want people to understand that this is in question. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mrs. Weaver.
Okay. Good, good evening, board. Let me hold that because it's just hanging there. Well, I'm going to speak to you on the same topic. We just had an election and everyone, I believe, wants there to be no doubt about the integrity or the conduct of the election, any election. But the one that just happened, I've noted, I've written it up. We don't have time for all of this. But, but I've written up the violations that I believe have occurred. There were four violations under Title XII and five under Title VII, as well as one under the Constitution, Article VII, Elections and Suffrage, Section II. So, I will start, if I have five minutes, I can go through a few of them. The first one, SDCL 121415 provides in paragraph two, "Notice of the new polling place shall be conspicuously posted at the old polling place location. At no time was signage provided at any time at the Somerset City Hall to redirect RCAS six, Area Six voters to the new location in Black Hawk." SDCL 12162 states, "All official ballots shall be printed on good quality bond paper in black ink and in the English language." While your ballots were created, that were created for the Meade County polling location, and I assume the ones you allowed to be early voted, they appear to follow the, the, the administrative law in color and in direction to the voters, but they were printed on half sheets of standard typing paper, or would appear to be that. They differ materially from the ballots provided by the Pennington County Auditor to Area Six voters in Pennington County. And the ballots, according to SDCL 12161, must comply with that law, which requires them to be printed in a manner described by the State Board of Elections. And we do not believe that they were on good quality bond paper. SDCL 121630 states specific content of the official stamp. The stamp shall contain the words "official ballot", the name or number of the election precinct, the name of the jurisdiction holding the election and the date of the election. The date may be omitted if it's pre-printed on the ballots, which it was. But the problem, and this is troubling, all of these four precincts didn't have any identifying feature on their ballots. The, the part of the Constitution that I referenced says that each elector who is qualified to vote within a precinct shall be entitled to vote in that precinct until he establishes another voting residence. If the board changed a precinct, they had every obligation to notify people of that in, using any means available to them. The thing that concerns me about this is that voters from four Meade County precincts voted at the Black Hawk Volunteer Fire Department, June 3rd. Black Hawk 14, Rural Black Hawk 15, West Black Hawk 16, and Somerset 10. As it stands, all of the, all of the ballots were stamped with a stamp that said "official ballot", Rapid City School District, Area Six. Area Six is not a precinct. Every single Meade County ballot says Area Six. So you have no way to report the results in Rural Black Hawk 15, or Black Hawk 14, or Somerset 10. We have no idea. They've all been thrown in one big pot. So, again, results are reported by precinct. There is no way to distinguish those precinct results. So that is very troubling to me. Moving forward, Title 13. 13710 governs school boards, school board elections and requires compliance with general election laws under Title XII, except as specifically provided in Chapter 13.7. 1378 requires the business manager of the school district, it says he shall publish in the official newspaper notices of an election once a week for two consecutive weeks with the first publication not less than ten days before the election. The notice shall state the date of the coming school election, the vacancies to be filled with terms of each, the candidates who have filled these vacancies, questions, if any, to be submitted at the election, and the location of the polling places. Really good so far. But it also says, "A facsimile of the official ballot shall be published in the calendar week prior to each election." No such publication occurred. We could not find one. So, yes. Okay. Well, to be continued. But thank you for listening. Not sure what to do with this. How about if I just lay it down?
Yes. All right. Next, our next speaker is Mr. Johnson.
Hello to the board. Want to thank you, everybody, for putting on the election itself. Obviously, as we saw, the election did not go off without a hitch. We did have a very clean election that happened here in Pennington County. So a lot of thanks needs to go out to the people that ran here in Pennington County. They did a really nice job and ran it exactly the way it should have been run, very professional. However, in the Meade County, we obviously had all kinds of irregularities. And when I say irregularities, what I mean are, there are actually laws, election laws, that were violated in this particular election. And some of them were pointed to. One thing I will bring up, and this is not necessarily pertaining to election law, but it is pertaining to things that I believe that the board should be looking into. As it is, the chief financial officer is in charge of the election, or was in charge of the election for all of Meade County. And because he directly reports to the board, I think it is on the board to look into the irregularities and make sure that the Rapid City School District is in alignment with South Dakota law. You need to be very careful about how you step forward just from a standpoint of, if anybody's going to follow the law, it needs to be those of us that are at the highest levels of, of leadership. And that would include especially like a school board. I think we need to be very careful. I would like you to look into some of the things that were brought up by Ms. Weaver tonight. We also had a situation where postings were made, and I believe they did the least amount possible in this particular election, meaning that in order to reach voters in Somerset and Black Hawk, Meade County, they posted in Lawrence County, to a paper in Lawrence County. Now, that might be the law, but there has to be a sense of common sense that comes into these types of things. Because two and a half hours into the election day, all of a sudden, they recognized that the way to get to the voters was to go to Facebook and post on Facebook, "Hey, if you in Somerset want to vote, you need to go to the Black Hawk Fire Department." Keeping in mind, we missed the first two and a half hours of election day before somebody in the school district recognized, "Hey, a good way to reach voters was the Facebook page." I'm sure they didn't pick up the phone and call the Black Hills Pioneer and ask them to post it on their website. Second thing, and most really, and probably the most disturbing to me, was the law she brought up about the stamp. So the stamp itself is required to have the precinct on it. There is no precinct on that particular stamp. And that means if I asked the chief financial officer, "How did I do in Somerset? What was the turnout in Somerset? Did I, did I get more? Did I get less?" Nobody would know because we have no idea to break it. We cannot break it down by precinct. And because the precinct is required by law to be on these stamps, then I think this is something that in particular, the board really needs to do a deep dive into. So far, from the school district, what we've seen is, from the media director or the public relations director, she was like, since she posted in the journal, that "We posted in the Black Hills Pioneer, but, and, and therefore, we're done. That's all we needed to do. And if the candidates did not look into where they were supposed to send the Somerset voters, that's on them. That's, they need to do their due diligence." Now, what she's basically doing in lieu of that is she's also slapping the voters in the face and saying, "Hey, we posted in the Lawrence County newspaper. I don't know why the people in Meade County didn't know. And it's on the voters. It's not on us. We did our job." And this is a really bad look from a school district who is supposed to be leading the way instead of pointing fingers at everybody else and asking everybody else to take the onus upon themselves. Same thing with the law on the stamp. We're being told that, "No, the stamp is okay. It's fine." But is it? Because according to state law, there is no precinct on that. So it's yet again, not our fault, somebody else's fault. We did what we were supposed to do. And I think at the end of the day, what I would like is for this board to decide to take a recess on the canvassing tonight. And let's just take a couple days. Let's look over the evidence. Let's get this right. It isn't a race to the finish. It is very possible I lost this election, and I am good with that. But with three votes separating me and my opponent, I feel like if we had gotten everybody to the polls, I really do feel strongly that I would have won this particular election. And I think we need to take the time to get it right as a school district, not only for ourselves, but for a, but for the kids. Let's show a good example to the kids as, hey, mistakes happen, things go wrong. This is how adults handle this kind of confrontation. And this is what adults do when mistakes happen. We own it, and we fix it, and we move on. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Board response to open forum. Mrs. Stephenson.
Thank you. I'm not going to speak to the specific complaints that you brought up. I just want to say, Mr. Johnson, that you ran a strong campaign. It was a clean campaign. And I am sorry that the process has been frustrating. It's been extremely frustrating for us as well. And that's all I'll say.
Mr. Swan, I'm sorry.
Thank you, President Carr. First of all, I'd like to say, I, I would like to say that was a, that was a pretty clean campaign. I enjoyed watching the, the results on, on the internet. But I would like to say, to Mr. Johnson, I do agree with you on the point of the fact that we all purchase these informations when we go to get, get elected. We purchase where our voters are, who voted which way, and it's kind of one of those things that we get from the county auditor. It's, you know, to be thrown into a whole bunch, to have it all thrown into one, one pile and not being able to show where we're from is a little, it would be a little frustrating for me as a, you know, if I were a candidate as well, you know, looking to get elected in the next election, it would be a little tough to, you know, decipher that information. So with your point, I agree with you. Thank you.
Mrs. Urban.
Okay. So I understand and probably share some of your concerns. My understanding, though, is that by certifying the election, we then trigger the process for a recount and, if you want to contest it. And so I'm not sure if we didn't certify it, where that would leave us. And so I almost feel like moving forward, it makes the most sense to go in that direction. It was not a flawless process, and I can't speak to the, to the legal portions of this. From a communications standpoint, I think what happened is unfortunate. So I, I share some of your frustrations, and if I was a candidate, I would, I would be upset as well.
Okay. Any other board member comments? Mr. Johnson, I will comment directly to the request of canceling the canvassing tonight. The challenge of, one of the challenges of that is that we would not be able to have any other meeting until we did the canvassing. And I think there are going to be other recourses of, of action and possibly correction to this process, number one. There, you, or I think you as a loser, would be able to, will be able to, five days after tonight, request a recount. After that, if there's no satisfaction, if you're still not satisfied, either candidate can contest the election. And so those are two remedies at your disposal. But it wouldn't be postponing tonight's canvassing, so. Anybody else? Hey, seeing no comments, we will have the canvassing this time.
Okay. Thank you, President Carr. So of course, the board's duty tonight is to canvass the election results. The codified law that addresses the canvas of election results is 13-7-18. That law states that the poll book shall be open and election results shall be canvassed. Obviously, that's not real thorough in terms of what exactly is happening. So more specific duties for the board as canvassers are laid out in administration, Administrative Rule 5021712, which discusses the duties of official board of canvassers for local jurisdictions. Those duties are as follows. Number one, open the returns from each precinct, which are found in each poll book. Number two, satisfy itself that the returns are genuine and not forged. Number three, tabulate the returns from the precincts and the certification of provisional ballot count. Number four, declare the result. And number five, make an abstract of the results. So we'll talk a little more about those steps individually. I think it's important to point out that this duty is ministerial in nature. As discussed earlier, the process is not intended to individually assess the validity of ballots or making findings or determination, determinations about the election process itself. Other legal processes are available to address those concerns, as President Carr pointed out, such as a recount or an election contest. So this is a ministerial duty meant to, to move through, to be able to certify, to move on to those other steps if necessary. In regard to the, the processes, so first, we'll have a board member unseal the poll books. That's going to look different, of course, in each county as we only had one polling location in, in Meade County. A member or members, as many as you all feel is necessary, of course, outside of those who, who ran in the election respectfully, should inspect those poll books and again, satisfy as laid out in the Administrative Rule that the returns are genuine and not forged. We'll then have a board member or members compare the individual precinct counts to the unofficial summary result count. All board members have or will be provided the reports. My suggestion would be to designate a member to read off the individual precinct counts and then another member to compare that to the summary result count. Lastly, a winner should be declared in each race, and then ultimately, the board should vote on whether or not they would like to certify the election results. Looking past this process, again, this is something that, that has been discussed a bit. There are a few details the board should be aware of. First would be the recount process. Any candidate who meets the criteria laid out in South Dakota Codified Law 13-7-192 may request a recount within five days of the official canvas. If a recount is conducted and a tie exists, the business manager will set a time and place for the drawing of lots to determine the outcome of the election. Candidates have the opportunity to contest the election within ten days of the canvas unless a recount is requested. If a recount is requested, the contest may be started within five days after the pronouncement of the result of the recount. Okay. With all that being said, if the board would like to take a moment to determine how they would like to designate those roles, we'll start circulating materials and then we can get the process started. So first and foremost, who would like to open and inspect poll books? Again, it can be one member, it can be multiple members. And then secondly, who is going to take the individual reports?
I'll open the poll books. And we didn't pre-discuss who would do what. So if there's a board member that has a burning desire to... be a part of the process, you may. Okay, um so Mrs. Stephenson. And since there can be more than one, any other board member want to be included in this process? Okay. Okay, we'll start with Pennington. And I'm assuming Ms. Clapham excused herself.
Yes, she was beaten that fall.
Who's opening the votes?
Oh.
Who's opening them?
Because I am. Okay, so uh who is verifying the reports?
Me.
Okay, so this is the summary report directly from Pennington County. So what you will want to compare is um the precinct number, the total votes here at the mid part of the page to the summary and then to the makes sense. Um, we'll be checking out the notes on that. Maybe do.
She's.
Yep, okay. So the first one is the summary and then the next are all locations.
And then we have a clean pocket. You're spot two.
Yeah, a little bit. So start.
Do we trust Apple?
Still in order. First, oh, but it's three dash two. Okay, we're and this is the order here. Okay, um I think what I will do is I will play to the camera so that it's recorded of what we're doing. So it'd be so you may not have the advantage of seeing, but it will be recorded. So this is poll book envelope three point two. I certify that it has not been opened. There is a poll book seal that has been signed, and I verify that it that it has not been opened.
I'm going to interrupt just to report on the record that Jamie Clapham excused herself from the um canvassing.
All right. I'll open the poll book.
Mr. Salsi, they're doing both candidates at once. Am I correct on that? Are both candidates on each in each packet?
Well, uh, in in Pennington County, there there will be precincts that will have both.
Yeah.
Poll books that will have both candidates.
Yeah, it looks like just.
Miss Clapham.
Just three dash five.
Yeah, three dash five. Okay, can I proceed? I will, I just again, for transparency, if there's conversation, I will stop what I'm doing, so. And I'm not a magician, by the way, so I wouldn't be able to do anything anyway. Okay. All right, there's a note in here that says Elaine Ewing on Landmark Drive passed away several years ago, and she is still on our registered voter list at three two. Okay, so noted. Thank you. Right? And we have the precinct three point two uh polling station cross roads Wesleyan Church. And this provisional provisional book is blank. Okay, now we have the poll book for precinct three point two. We have the signed certification by precinct officials. And we have the poll book recording. All right. All right.
Can you tell me how many signatures are in the poll book?
There.
Or do we wait until then?
There are going to be um situations where signatures from poll book don't necessarily match outcome because in some of those areas, um not all voters who are registered in that area are also eligible to vote in a in a board election. So uh comparing signatures directly to to uh tabulated results are not always going to tie out, just. So I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I have the page of certification by precinct officials. And we have the signatures page. Where is? Am I missing something? I don't believe so. Page with the count. So these are are tabulated at the auditor's office, so they don't do a count at the polling location. Okay.
So then what am I comparing?
Yes, you're you're comparing these individual precinct reports. So these are the the reports handed directly from the Pennington County Auditor's Office. So for example, three dash two, um Angela Bradsky, Rafferty, one hundred and sixty nine votes, uh Michael Burklin, one hundred and seventy five. And then this was the um unofficial summary from the county. So we want to ensure that those two numbers are are matching what unofficial summary says.
Okay, so those match.
Yep.
Can you, sorry, can you clarify that one more time? What the process is, because I feel like previously there was like something that we counted in the envelope, right?
Um, so I I think as uh Christine mentioned, in the past, sometimes we've referenced the idea of uh signatures matching up to what the the county is providing in terms of actual numbers. I think as we've we've worked through that process, it's be been at times very difficult to understand because you have overvotes, undervotes, blank ballots, things that as they're running through the tabulator machine, they're disqualifying. Um, and so ultimately, what uh the county is giving us uh in terms of the the actual results that went through the tabulator machine are these two reports. So, you know, certainly you can.
So we're just verifying that it is in the envelope.
I think in the past, we had this sheet and this sheet. So just for again transparency, um we are comparing um this Rapid City Area Schools Combined Municipal School Report with um the report from the county. So in this in District three point two, we have one hundred and sixty nine votes for uh Mrs. Rafferty and one hundred and seventy five for Mr. Burkland. And that matches what's on this sheet, one sixty nine and one seventy five. So um while you won't be able to see each, um I I don't think I'm taking any any questions. I'm just.
Well, it's just a public.
But it's not a public debate, though.
It's a question. I I'm looking at thirteen, seven, seventeen Certification of School District Election Returns um and Preservation of Ballots. It says the returns from a school district election shall be certified by the election board in each polling place and the ballot is properly sealed, et cetera. But how do they certify if if they don't count them? That's my question.
Okay, you have answered the time. Okay, I I will allow this this question, but continuing on, we will continue with the processes as we know it and.
Could we? Could we share the signatures amount just to be extra safe? That feels like the most.
You just want the whole packet or?
I don't want to touch it, but um I just could as a candidate on there. But could we, could you write, read off how many signatures there are? I think that's numbered on the sheet, if I'm correct, just that on that signature sheet there, kind of like Ms. Stephenson asked for earlier, on the signature sheet, there are however many signatures. With the understanding that there could be blank ballots. In some areas, they might have voted for just city council, all that sort of thing, but at least to give us kind of a reference.
Okay, this has a hundred and forty six signatures. If that's what you're asking.
And then there's the second.
This should cry, thank you. I'll be another close. Yeah, so it's the other one. Okay, my apologies. The second signature sheet has a hundred and three.
Then then that lines up with the election day amount, so.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that that helps to
Does that line up?
To election day, not the total.
Oh, got it.
Yep. Okay, I see the next precinct as three point two, three point three. Hey, polling book seems to be intact. Um, the seal the seal is intact, but I will
I'll show it on screen.
Yeah, I will, and um uh, Ms. Urban, will you come and describe? Is it just a little piece of the seal that's? I don't know how quite to describe it.
There's a small chunk out of the seal, about the size of a fingerprint. But it's not over the actual seal. Yeah, the majority of the seals intact. No.
Okay, and I'll show this on the camera, all right? Shirley, I lost your uh.
Right there.
There it is. Okay. We have the poll book for precinct three point three. Poll location, Calvary Lutheran Church. Uh, the next page has the uh oath of precinct officials. Mr. Burkland, did you want the the count of signatures on here also? All right, there is one hundred and sixty two. And I don't Okay, I don't see any skipping or crossed out, so, all right? And I have the certification by uh precinct their initials, their signatures. Okay, the provisional uh poll book is blank, has no signatures on it. And so for precinct three point three, Mrs. Rafferty uh has a total of a hundred and sixty six and Mr. Burkland, a hundred and thirty one. And that matches, well, I guess you're verifying.
And that matches.
And board members, if you have any questions.
That's my question, just noting that that one is off by thirty signatures from the number that we have, which I'm just for reference.
Okay, the next is precinct three point four. Polling book three point four, the seal is completely intact. And we have the provisional poll book, zero provisional ballots. Precinct three point point four, Calvary Lutheran Church. Again, the second page has uh the signatures of the precinct officials and also their signature page. This polling location, and uh Mr. Burkland, you want the numbers for each? Okay, um three hundred and four in this ballot book.
That one is exactly what we have.
Okay. All right, Mrs. uh Stephenson, do you verify that our numbers match?
Yes, our summary is Mrs. Bradsky, two fifty, Mr. Burkland, one ninety nine. Um, the total ballots cast was four fifty one. There were two blank, and that adds up to four forty nine.
Next precinct is three point five. And this is the polling book, three point five. The book seal is completely intact. Precinct three from point five, polling place Whispering Pines Fire Department. Again, signatures of the precinct officials. This poll book has two hundred and nineteen signatures. And again, signatures by the precinct officials. There are no provisionals, no provisional signatures in the poll book. Ms. Stephenson, do you verify those numbers match?
I do. Three hundred and fourteen total, one twenty one Rafferty, seventy one seven seventy one Burkland, forty eight Johnson, and seventy four Clapham.
And that also matches the amount for election day.
Okay, thank you very much. Hold on, let me catch up here. That was three point five precinct five dash two. Okay, here's the envelope. The poll book seal is completely intact. There are zero signatures on the provisional polling book. Precinct five point two Canyon Lake Activity Center. Signatures of precinct officials. There are a hundred and twenty seven signatures in this polling book. And again, certification by precinct officials.
Um, I can confirm that fifty two votes were cast for Rafferty, eighty five for Burkland, and that that matches with the Pennington County results at five two.
Okay, next is precinct five point three. In polling uh poll book seems to be undisturbed. Polling seal is completely intact. No provisional signatures. Precinct five point three Middle West Middle School Community. Again, signatures of the precinct officials. There are a hundred and fifty seven signatures in this precinct.
So um I can confirm Ms. Rafferty thirteen, Mr. Burkland twenty five, and that matches with the Pennington County. The discrepancy in the signatures is because there was also an alderman, and far more people had the alderman on their ballot without the. The discrepancy in the signatures is because there was also an alderman and far more people had the alderman on their ballot without the. Um, without the school board.
Yeah, thank you for adding that, I was gonna say, we're we're barely in barely in that area, so that makes sense.
Okay, precinct five point five, the poll book seems to be undisturbed, the seal is completely intact. There are zero provisional signatures. Signatures of the precinct officials. There are two.
Certified anyway, zero for Johnson, zero for Clapham, and that matches what the county gave us.
Okay, polling buck envelope, C L. The polling book uh seems to be undisturbed, the seal is completely intact. Hey, you are you all old enough to uh remember the Cracker Jack boxes and there's a prize inside the Cracker Jack box? That's what this seems like, alright, there is a note that. Okay, attention auditor voter error. C L voter Beverly Brayman placed her ballot in five-two ballot box instead of C L ballot box. Beverly uh Brayman signed at number eleven in poll book. C L, which is per, which is her correct voting precinct. Okay, so, there's that. Uh precinct Charlie Lima Canyon Lake Activity Center, signatures of precinct officials. There are fifty-six signatures on this ballot. And the certification by the precinct officials.
Um, the county provided us with forty-one votes for Johnson and forty votes for Clapham and that is. Um, commensurate with what we have in our unofficial results.
Next at Delta Tango, precinct Delta Tango. Okay, the envelope appears undisturbed, the polling seal is completely intact. This is poll book for precinct Delta Tango, the DOTA Fire Department.
Doty.
Doty. Precinct official um official signature, there are. A hundred and ten signatures in this book. There are also no provisional signatures.
Um, our unofficial results are Brian Johnson sixty-nine, Clapham fifty-nine. Um, is this, oh, I'm sorry, and so for DT, that matches what the county gave us. Um, Johnson sixty-nine, Clapham fifty-nine. I'm not gonna try. Doty.
Alright, the next. Hotel Romeo. The polling book envelope seems to be un. Uh, I lost my verbiage, undisturbed, the seal is uh completely intact. Polling book Hotel Romeo for Rapid City Christian School, signature of precinct officials. There are eighty-two signatures on this page. And we have the certification by precinct official signatures.
Um, our results so showed Johnson sixty-five, Clapham forty-eight, and that matches the. What the county has, Johnson sixty-five, Clapham forty-eight.
Um, this. One moment, please.
President Carr, you stated that there was eighty-two signatures on there, and what I'm looking at says eighty-three. Is that correct, or?
It's our understanding that there are gonna be discrepancies between the the number of signatures and the number of ballots cast. In almost all of them, because ballots are left unmarked. Or someone voted for two for for any reason, and we don't have the explanation for that, we're just gonna.
Understood.
Document it today.
Um, polling book Juliet Sierra appears to be untampered, the. Um, poll book seal is completely intact. Provisional book has zero signatures, polling book for precinct uh Juliet Sierra Rimrock Community Center. At Johnson Siding, we have the signatures of the precinct officials. We have a hundred and thirty signatures on this polling book.
We have seventy-six for Johnson and sixty-two for Clapham, and that matches up with what's provided to us by the county.
Yeah, next Whiskey Papa. Okay, the polling book envelope itself is undisturbed, the seal is completely intact. Provisional book has zero signatures. Polling precinct Whiskey Papa Whispering Pines Fire Department, signatures of the precinct officials. There are. A hundred and eighty-one signatures um. On this record with the certification by precinct officials.
The numbers provided at W P are Brian Johnson one oh seven, Jamie Clapham one sixteen, which matches what was provided us by the county.
And the polling book envelope for Romeo precinct Romeo Kilo is undisturbed, the. Polling book seal is completely intact. Hey, Romeo Kilo precinct polling place Parkview Church. Just one signature. And the certification sheet of precinct officials.
Um, we had one vote for Johnson and two for Clapham, and that matches our information from the county. And that concludes Pennington County's results.
So, Mr. President, that was all the Pen County uh results, moving into, thank you, uh. Uh, Mead County, so Mead County obviously is gonna look a little different as as a single polling location. Um, we, there was two poll books, uh they had two uh separate tables set up. Um, there the materials look a little different um than uh uh what Pennington County has provided, but. Um, should have all the the uh similar documents included, um so, here are those. And then obviously as a summary, um, the summary is is what I just handed out. Um, again, only one polling location, so it's not going to be uh broken into individual numbers.
Okay. Precinct Black Heart, Black Hawk. Romeo Charlie District six, this is the recap sheet. Um, this. Uh, the precinct official, the ballot reconciliation, okay, and ballot reconciliation. Rapid City. School District, some in Area Six Election Poll Book, and official vote count. With tally sheets. Okay, uh, what you all. Can't see is. The oath, the oath of the precinct election board and the oath of the county board. Alright, there are a hundred and thirty-three signatures. Big, hundred and thirty-three. Tally summary from the county. Okay, and also they have a tally page. Um, Mr. Johnson one thirty-six and Mrs. Clapham one forty-five.
And those numbers match the numbers provided in the summary of the election results.
Oh, okay. My apologies, this second book has the same information with the oath of precinct election board. And the oath of the counting board. This uh book, this ballot. Poll book and official vote count has a hundred and thirty-one signatures.
To be clear, those aren't signatures, I think that's just a written list.
Okay, written list, which is different than the other.
Yeah.
Thank you for that correction. Yeah, they all.
All the same handwriting, so somebody was just handwriting something.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry, how many were in the second, one thirty-three in the first?
Uh, he said one thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
For a total of two sixty-four, which is about. Two one uh seventeen off from the total, which absentee that would. Mr. Sassy or someone else, could you explain why those ones aren't sealed?
Excuse me, so, um. They uh, I believe we have uh precinct superintendent here, um happy to have her come up and address, um. They were, as far as I'm aware, uh I believe with the ballot box. Um, and this was the the form that I got them in, I I have not been in contact with them until, um.
Yeah.
Five minutes before this meeting, so, um, this was the the form that they came in. Yes, that would be it, so Mead County, uh that was the the Mead County, um, now, all. Information has been canvassed and and now you move into the uh declaration of winners and then voting on the canvas. No.
I didn't, I didn't, in this fact that I received, there wasn't.
There's no provisionals in Mead or Pennington that were reported.
Alright, um, that concludes the uh canvassing, I will. Hey, you said we have to declare the winner or?
Yeah, so, uh, you also have a a summary sheet, um, that has all of the. Um, information regarding each area, uh votes broken down by candidate. Um, and that would ultimately be what we're going to make, so declaration of a winner would just be confirming. Yet the results show and then voting on the the campus.
Okay, um. I will entertain a motion that based on the canvassing. Um, the board's canvassing. For Area Three, the winner is Mrs. Rafferty. And for Area Six, the winner is Miss Clapham. Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to um certify. Uh, the results of the motion that I mentioned, um. We will have a roll, Shirley, can we have a?
Can I, real quick, um, I just wanted to make clear before the vote, um, as Christine already said. We don't really have any way to determine. If there was irregularities, all we have is the signature votes, um, and so in voting for this, it's not that. As Mr. or President Carr noted earlier, this is the first step to any kind of. Issue bringing up whatever recount, whatever you wanna do, and so. It's not that we're doing anything wrong by canvassing, we're doing our job, our part of the job, and then that starts whatever it is that you choose to do.
Okay, I. I just have an interesting, so, I guess you don't mind certifying your own election?
I'm fine with recusing myself too, but whatever you decide to do, if I were to. Yeah, I can recuse.
Probably, okay, and we have enough to still.
Yeah, I was recusing, approving my loss, so that felt less. Less bad than approving my win, but yeah, I can recuse myself either way.
Okay, um.
Can I say something prior to vote?
Yeah, for me.
Um, it's my understanding that the South Dakota Supreme Court has made a statement that said. Whenever it is suggested that illegal votes have been received or that there was other fraudulent conduct and practices at the election. It is apt to imagine that it is the duty to inquire into these alleged frauds, they're talking about of the canvassers. And decide upon the legality of the votes, but this is a mistake, our duty is is. Our duty is is wholly ministerial. It is not our duty to determine whether this election um was legal, met all the qualifications. That's a judicial thing and it's not a school board thing, and I just want, that's my understanding as we enter into this vote.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion? We have the um motion and second, any other discussion? Um, Mrs. Clapham will be recorded as abstaining. Abstaining, okay. All right, we're ready for the roll call.
Troy?
Yes.
Christine or Jamie Epstein? Um, Christine?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Michael Epstein? Walt?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Motion passes five with two abstaining.
Okay, and um it's it's um, it won't be any harm to uh repeat the process, especially Mister Johnson, so you have five days from today to ask for request to recount. And um if there's, you're still not satisfied with that outcome, then you, I I'm not sure what the process is, but you have the ability to contest the election. Okay, moving on with the agenda. Items for board information, Dr. Strosser, we will be doing the end of the year strategic plan report. Um, do you all need a break?
Yeah.
All right, let's take a three-minute break. Thank you.
Putting any pressure on anybody. Just playing a little long read, so. What, what, what's, what's, what should I say, Bob?
Well. Um, ho- hopefully, as we go through this, uh, we'll be able to answer a lot of the questions you might have and and that would uh, of course, speed things up, but we wanna be thorough, we wanna give you the information uh that you need to know about uh our progress, so um. Awesome. Uh, well, uh, thank you, Board, and uh good evening. Uh, it's great to be here again as we get into uh the summertime that brings the end of the school year and uh we wanted to have an opportunity to share our end-of-year update regarding our strategic uh plan. So uh tonight, you're gonna see uh progress and you're gonna see challenges uh from each pillar of our plan. And hopefully, uh, we're giving you a clear picture of where RCS stands as we move from uh this year into next year. So strategic planning is not a one-time event, it's a continuous process of learning and improvement. So we're now uh in year two of fully implementing this plan. Uh, and hopefully, you you see that real sustainable change does take time. Uh, they typically tell us three to five years to truly become ingrained in our system, or we would like to, we like to use the word hardwired. Uh, so you'll hear that from us uh throughout the evening as well. So our focus is on intentional, system-wide alignment uh rather than uh isolated steps. And that's what we're continually talking about and working towards. So the data we shared tonight highlights both uh our strengths and areas where we need to improve, because that's what effective systems do. We monitor, we adjust, we learn. Um, so as we review this information, our goal is to be transparent, uh to reflect our progress and to identify uh where we need to pivot a- and move forward. You've seen this before, this is just how we look at short cycles of improvement, because again, that's uh at the heart of our approach. So this allows us uh by by taking these, this uh thirty, forty-five, uh ninety kind of day approach throughout the year. It allows us to respond quickly, to highlight what's working, to address challenges and to support uh uh our work in in real time. So that's how we uh approach it, and you can see, uh, we'll start this process again uh later this summer uh and into the school year. So the purpose, uh, as I've mentioned a little bit, is to provide an honest look at our progress. We talk about uh bright spots and we talk about uh challenges and things that we need to um that really fit with continuous improvement. So we wanna celebrate what's working as always, uh, we think celebration is a a key part of our organization. Uh, but we wanna be candid about uh what what isn't working and what those challenges are. So ultimately, our focus is on building a culture where improvement is ongoing and where feedback drives our actions. Hopefully, you've heard me say this before, but we are learning leaders who lead learning, a learning organization. Uh, we live by that, we ask ourselves these five questions. And ultimately, number five is one that we like to focus on, and that is, that is always what does better look like. So just framing and thinking about, uh, how do we create a hardwired culture of the really good things uh that are going on, but yet being responsive to the things that that aren't as good and and how we can pivot from there. So um, that's uh, that's what our focus is, and uh as we go through our pillar updates tonight. Uh, so just want you to keep in mind that uh we're about progress, we're about learning, adjusting and continuing to move forward through this. So with that, we're gonna start with our communications pillar. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mister Daniel and Miss Shaf Power uh for some information regarding progress on the communication pillar.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us tonight. Um, for communication, um, you can see this would be the scorecard. Um, we have went through, I think important to note for every scorecard you're gonna see tonight. The red means we fell, we were not on target with our goal. Yellow means we improved but didn't hit our goal, and green means we did hit our goal. So you'll see that through the five pillars on their scorecards.
And I wanna jump in on that because uh when when we talk about feedback as a leadership group, we're constantly looking at basically the stoplight and and utilizing those colors to identify uh what's going well, what's not, and and how we need to move forward. So as Miss Shaf Power pointed out, uh, you're gonna see that throughout uh the information we share tonight.
Um, so for our first uh measure for the district services survey, the accessibility question. In twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we scored a four point three three, and our goal was to maintain that with a four point three three. Um, this year, um, it did lower to a four point one seven. And as we recognize that accessibility fell fell below our goal, um, while the overall score remains high for scores in this survey, a small dip can signal that we need to reevaluate how easy it is for um our principals and managers to access the communication they need from DDL. Um, so we're committing to refining our communication channels and ensuring the standards of communication are accessible to all principals and managers um through our action steps. The second par- part that we looked at was the district services survey on accuracy. In twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we scored a four point two eight. Our goal was to raise it to a four point three three. Um, we did fall short on that again this year, um, for out of, and we scored a four point two five. Um, we have realized that accuracy is a key pillar of communication, um, and we did not meet our goal this year. This result shows that we must continue to work on clarity and consistency of messaging to those groups and sharing information that is needed. So moving forward, we're going to focus on tight tightening up the internal process and reducing confusion through clearer messaging. The third that we looked at was the employee experience survey. Um, and that was timely communication across the organization, that's what that question highlighted. In twenty-three, twenty-four, our baseline was a three point three nine. Our goal is to raise that to a three point five nine. Um, our twenty-four, twenty-five results, we did raise it to a three point four three, so we did see improvement, but we did not hit our goal. Um, this is encouraging to see because it's a step in the right direction for that clear communication. Employees are beginning to feel improvements in timely information that's shared district-wide. And this feedback reinforces the importance of streamlining those internal updates and continuing to focus on that area next year. The fourth one is the employee experience survey for understanding the mission and goals of of this new strategic plan. Um, so the baseline was a three point eight seven, the goal was to raise that to a three point nine seven. And we did raise it to a three point nine, so we fell just a little bit short of our goal. And again, this data shows that more employees are connecting with our mission and goals through how we are sharing it. Um, again, we were short of our target, but the progress confirms that our strategic messaging is gaining traction and people are starting to understand what strategic plan we are on. Um, as we can, and we will continue to integrate our vision into day-to-day communications, sign-offs, signatures on emails, um, and then also professional development as well. And then our fifth was the parent caregiver survey. Um, this is a survey that we asked Studer Education to specifically put on for our district, so we did curate this question ourselves. Um, and it's about timely communication from my office. Um, so for the baseline, it was a three point six nine, our goal is to raise it to a three point eight four. Um, our twenty-four, twenty-five results was a three point eight one. So we did see improvement, but did not hit our goal again, but communication with families has improved noticeably with that score. Um, and we are nearly to our goal, and it tells us that our efforts in connecting with parents promptly and transparently is working um with the integration and the action steps that Shane and I have been taking, um, as well as principals and managers. And so we'll continue to build the momentum to ensure families feel informed and valued.
All right, so uh two bright spots of outcomes that related to data with the short-cycle action plan. Um, we have, we created a district contact list for all the different departments that support the organization. Um, that's shared with new hires as they come on board, and it's updated as as the staffing changes throughout the organization. Uh, the survey results, uh, three of the five are actually moving and trending positive, which is, which is a, is a good, good outcome. Um, especially since we're just in the start of the second year with all this. One of the bright spots related to the short-cycle action plan, or a couple of them, we have the new website launch in April, and then we just launched the newsletter at the end of May. Um, and then hopefully, the newsletter will get us to where we have a common format for all the different depart- department newsletters. Um, and also with the new website, push notifications is going to be a big deal as well, so. Um, and we're really working to try to communicate the website out to the, to the staff. Like when my, when my staff goes out to work with with Schools for Work orders, I've asked them to just say, hey, do you have the app on your phone, just because they interact with staff every day, just to get that word out there, so.
Did the, I don't know if I saw the Engage newsletter, that it already went out?
Yes, it was the end-of-the-year wrap-up. Um, it said, it was like hello, summer on the top. It went to all staff and parents.
Okay.
Um, it did, it came from a do not reply at K twelve dot S D dot U S, that helps if you wanna look it up.
Okay. It came from what?
I think it's do not reply at K twelve.
Man, you caught me. That's okay. Is there any way for you to get feedback on the new website and how it's doing or not doing, or what, what people are thinking about it?
Eric, you're still not under on slide four, but we are planning on putting together a committee, a parent committee, and a staff committee to talk about communication, but that, we could also, the next round of surveys, we could also do that piece as well, but that's a good, a question.
Any other questions for?
I did.
Team, yes, ma'am.
Um, with those survey results, that's all lumped together, families, staff, um, student, did the student, like, were there communication?
So it depends on what we chose, so the district services survey is uh to our principals and managers. Our employee experience survey is to all employees. Um, and then the parent caregiver survey is for parents and caregivers. No, that's completely fine.
Thank you.
And and those are specific questions on those surveys?
Yep. Um, so then a couple um barriers and challenges that we've seen. Um, it's hard to understand the communication challenges and receive feedback. Um, there are multiple groups that we communicate to, so parents, staff and students, um, and then the community. But a lot of time, there's some overlap, so it's trying to unders- better understand how they wanna be communicated with. Um, and then also they cross over, so some staff are parents and vice versa, so, um, well, I guess, yeah. But, um, it's not a one-size-fits-all for best practices. So Shane and I are, um, again, you'll see on the next slide, um, some of, one of the action steps that we're gonna take to help clarify that. Um, and then it's also hard to gauge the full impact of communication efforts outside of just surveys, which we've heard the death by survey in this district, we don't wanna be sending out too many surveys. Um, so again, the next slide will kind of explain our ideas behind um getting a better read of communication in the district.
Right, we chose uh the the format, one, one of the next steps we're going to do is put together a committee to talk about communication and what what's working well, what isn't working well with uh parents and staff. The idea is to form something late August and with our first meeting in September, so that's. And again, to Bobby touching this, it's just, it's just hard to get a feel for what's really happening with communication, because it's, you can measure some things, but then you you'll hear one person say, oh, I didn't hear about this or that. And to really understand, is it a big system-wide problem or is it a one-off, so we really wanna try to dig in and do, find out the things that we can do that people like, people and people don't like, so we can do better, so.
I I think as part of that, it'll be interesting what kind of feedback you get around the website, knowing that uh, parents and and anybody who has it can go to specific, uh, the specific school and then also look at at this. and then also look at, at district-wide communications utilizing the app. So not something we've had in place before.
You had a question?
We've talked in the past about like money for Facebook marketing. I feel, one of the things I feel is necessary is repetition. You know, like there's one email that goes out and says, there's a new website and an app, or one Facebook post that says, get the app. I really feel like I need to see things a few times until it really registers, like, okay, finally I will download that app. And I wonder if, did we ever use Facebook money to kind of, or did, did we start to engage with marketing on Facebook?
For the app specifically?
Yeah.
We have, I have not done that yet. We, this summer I used as kind of a planning period and to kind of work out the kinks of it before it's full go with making sure everything and pushing the download and everything. In the community pillar, we will dive a little more into the app and the specifics about behind downloads and everything as of right now.
Yeah, just feedback as a parent, like I, I do think people need to hear it like 10 times. And new student registration would be a good time to do that, but as much repetition as possible.
I have worked with clerical on, because in orientation, typically they hand out like, here's School Messenger, the previous platform we use, this is the number you need to text to enroll. So I have worked with them on updating all of that information for parents for the beginning of school year, so.
From time to time, it probably will be in the student attendance report. Can we get an update on this committee and just kind of what's going good, what's not? Just outside of, of this particular pillar reporting, just knowing what's going on with communication. Thank you. Any other questions, board members?
All right, well, we're going to transition to our community pillar, and Ms. Donovan will join Ms. Shafbauer here and walk us through their information.
Right, so on the screen you will see the scorecard for the community pillar. I will walk through each one and talk about each one a little bit, like I did for the communication pillar, except for Ms. Donovan's. So for engagement with district-level communication, the baseline, we had seventeen thousand six hundred and forty-three followers last year at this time, and a thirty-four percent open rate on School Messenger for emails. The goal was to raise that to two percent. We weren't quite understanding. I mean, that's showing this right now, it kind of shows that we may have shot a little bit below where we should have been for that goal. But we did raise it to nineteen thousand four hundred and six followers. And then the thirty-six percent open rate as the goal, it is not apply anymore because we no longer use School Messenger. So I did put on their app downloads because that will be the new metric that we will be following. So right at the moment, we have one thousand four hundred and forty-four app downloads for the RCA, RCAS app. We exceeded our engagement goal for the year, and with growth in followers, it does show that there has been stronger support from the community, especially on social media. This reflects a growing connection between district and community, and we'll continue to build on this momentum and post regularly to keep families informed and engaged. And then the next one, the family caregiver survey, this one reflected on pride in your child's school. So the baseline was 3.96. Our goal was to hit 4.06, and we hit the goal, woo! So we're proud to have met our goal in this area because when families say they are proud to have their child in our school, it affirms the work of our staff creating a safe, welcoming, and high-quality education experience. And this also reflects the dedication of our staff across the district and hopefully spreads positive connotations of our school district in the community. And then the next one would be the employee experience survey.
Excuse me, Bobby?
Yes.
Is the process, so that now that you've met the goal, is the process for next year then to move the, the goal posts higher than?
Right, and, and that's where, that'll come after this, is we'll start identifying, how are we going to move? You, you'll see that, like in, in this example, she talked about app, app downloads as being the new metric. There are a few occasions where we do need to change our metric because the baseline is no longer relevant, or it's not the best. And, and that's part of the learning process. So that's in a couple places. And that's what we'll do from now until the start of the school year, and, and that'll play into, you know, what the board looks at in terms of, through your board retreat and the emphasis that, that you all have on the strategic plan and where you want to see things, so you can have some input there. But we're going to definitely identify, you know, like 4.06, okay. What's realistic for us to target next year? We want to, we want to have good, solid goals that are not easy, easy to attain, but aren't unrealistic either. So, so that's how we're going to look at, at all of our processes here.
Great, thank you.
And then, so for the employee experience survey, this would be staff recommending our district to parent, or to the community. So there was a 3.72. Our goal is to raise it to a 3.87, and we ended up raising it to a 3.78. So we did see improvement, but we did not reach our goal. Again, we're moving in the right direction with this, with more staff saying they would recommend our district to families. While we didn't reach the goal, improvement shows growing internal confidence within our schools, which is always great. And we'll continue to support staff and build a culture around staff that are proud to be within our district. And for the next one, it is the board member participation in school and community events. We are going to be removing this until we can maybe revisit this at the retreat, so that way we can better define a metric that you guys would like to track for your community involvement. So for the time being, we are going to remove it, and then after that retreat, we can make sure and get that redone, so.
And that's just something we didn't emphasize enough, I didn't bring back to you about, how do you really want to do this? It's just not something that, that we got done this year, and that's why you see what you have here, and we'll bring it back and, and have better conversation and dialogue around what's appropriate. How do you want to see things in the community realm?
And then the last area within this pillar is the number of district volunteers. And so our baseline was eleven sixty-four for the number of volunteers in our district, with our goal being one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. And we did not meet that because I think it's more of an evolving metric in that we, how we identify a volunteer is maybe not the same as what those numbers really look like. So as we continue to evolve and rethink how we track and measure the volunteer involvement, is how this metric will, will potentially change. We didn't meet the goal, but we're working on building a more accurate and inclusive picture of how community members contribute to our schools. And volunteerism obviously remains value and a growing part of our district, district culture in general.
Ms. Clapton?
I feel like Ms. Donovan probably kind of, sorry, just as I look at, I agree that like the metric isn't really telling. I think, you know, it's like throwing ideas out there, and I, I don't ever want to put like more work on our staff at buildings, but it's like frequency of actually volunteering, because if you have one person who volunteers twenty times, and then you have one person who volunteered on a field trip once, like in this metric, they're the same. And so that's just like really not telling at all, or if one school has fifty parents have volunteered one time, and then so, so I think if like frequency of occurrence or like, I don't want to get into like hours, but I think that would probably be a more telling metric to me than it would be. And I just, I, during the campaign, I had several staff say, I see such a difference when families are in our buildings. And I think that we are still, it's five years later, I think we're still struggling from COVID. Like we kind of were like, don't be in our buildings. And I'm like, no, we want you back. So I think, I definitely think we're still struggling with that too. But yeah, I think like the, you said, the, the frequency would be probably a better telling metric than like just the number, particularly with the requirement, which makes sense, but the requirement for field trips to sign up, you know, that parent goes one time and then we never see them again.
Correct, yep.
I would say those are, are very realistic comments because we've had robust discussion around, is this the right metric? And, and if it is, what does it really look like? And, and that goes to what you're saying. So, so we've been, I wouldn't say playing with this, but trying to determine, is this the right thing? What does it look like? And how can we do, do that better?
All right, Ms. Urban?
I just wanted to mention on this topic that I'm a volunteer, but I've never been asked to volunteer. And I've, except for like by the schools in my area that I know personally, they've called and said, hey, will you come help us with this or that? And I absolutely will. But I just wonder how many people have that same experience. I'm on a list, but I never get asked. And I know my husband is too, and he's never received any requests, so. I, I don't know if we're an anomaly or not, but I think that there are a lot of people that are willing to help and just maybe don't get asked to.
And that's, that, that is a good majority of the issue, Katie, is that we have a list of people. So the numbers that you're seeing are the numbers of volunteers in a database. So when they apply to be a volunteer, that's where that number comes from. And then when the buildings mark them or determine that they're inactive, then we pull them off of that list. So a parent comes in and does a field trip in September, right, and volunteers for a field trip, and then isn't able to do anything the rest of the year, at some point that, that person will drop off because they're inactive. We don't have a way currently to send out volunteer opportunities for community members. So in order to, to volunteer in a building, it is that building reaching out. There have been a few situations where we need volunteers for junior achievement. And so we will send out a mass email to everybody in our database, looking for volunteers to help with something. But we don't have a good platform, and maybe that's something we can potentially look at using, but our current platform does not allow for that at this point. And I would say that our building coordinators don't necessarily send a communication to our volunteer coordinator saying, I need volunteers for this event. They try to find them more in-house. So again, I think that goes back to how it's evolving, and we're, we're needing to find what that metric is that we really want to, to use.
I had one, Katie, you're not alone. I'm a volunteer, my husband's a volunteer, my mother-in-law is a volunteer, and we've never gotten a call. I have sought out volunteer opportunities, but never have been asked to help, and certainly not asked to help anywhere outside of Wilson Elementary, with the exception of potentially some Stevens events. But I just, I know that Stevens is tracking volunteer hours on their students, like they can tell you how many hours their students have volunteered, and they can get messages to their students that a volunteer is needed.
If they, if they use the platform.
Right, I just find, and I know that there is a lot of, there's a lot that needs to happen, like schools need to get used to asking for volunteers, but I just find it hard to believe that it's hard to get a volunteer opportunity out to the list of volunteers that we have. I, I feel like this is a problem that technology could solve. Because what happens is if you say, I want to volunteer, let's say some retired person says, I want to volunteer the district, they fill out the form, they never hear a thing, then they're like, the district doesn't need me. And we lose an opportunity to engage with the community and get people into our districts and show them what's happening. Like, I think this is a vital part of not just community, but communication, because it, it gets people in our schools, and they understand us, and they know the challenges, and they're helped, they feel like they're a part of the process. And so I just, I really hope, number of volunteers doesn't mean anything to me either. Number of hours would mean something, and I think that there has got to be a way to track volunteer hours in a school district.
So am I hearing correct that the problem is more the buildings not calling Mrs. Urban and Mrs. Stephenson to come and volunteer?
So the way, the way our volunteers are currently set up, our volunteer coordinator currently, it, she, what she does is she runs them through their, through the different volunteer processes. They fill out the application.
Is that building?
No, that is at the district level.
One district volunteer?
Coordinator, yeah. So she's, she's the coordinator, and really when you call her the volunteer coordinator, she is, she is really just doing the background check of things, right? You're a level one volunteer, two, three. So you have to remember that when we are looking at this number, a district volunteer is anywhere from somebody coming in and doing a a field trip, you know, being a chaperone on a field trip, to a high school coach volunteer. So they're putting in, they're at practice every single day, football practice, they're going to games. So the level of volunteers is a lot different as well. And so it just kind of depends on life ways. When life ways comes in, they're actually considered a volunteer within our building. So we have a lot of different areas that are, are considered volunteers. And that's where I think it becomes kind of a struggle because that person who is a district volunteer as a, as a football coach might not necessarily be able to go into the classrooms and so forth. And so deciphering of who wants to truly go into buildings and help versus they're stepping into a specific role as a volunteer. Does that make sense?
Honestly, no, but because I, 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 like I said, I think that what we're talking about is the communication between the district and volunteers, and there's evidence that that's not happening. So how do you correct volunteer opportunities and match them to volunteers, actual people that are waiting by the phone to be contacted? I think that's what the question and the disconnect is, right? Am I right? Question mark?
I, I do think that that is, that is a challenge, yes, on how we communicate with those people. And the timeliness of it. Because sometimes, as an example, I helped out at Central High School this year during testing, and I needed someone to stuff envelopes. I had envelopes to go out to every junior. And I went to Mandy and I said, I need to find someone, I need someone to volunteer to help, and it was, we'll take care of this. And so it was a timeliness thing where it was more work to try to find a volunteer to do it versus just doing it. So I think that does honestly happen sometimes in our buildings.
That might be an interesting metric. How many times are volunteers contacted from buildings or from the volunteer coordinator? How, how often is communication going from the district to the volunteers?
And I think the other piece is, is even just tracking when they're logging in, right? They're going to Wilson to help do X, Y, and Z. Right now, it's just a matter of signing in typically, and sometimes that's not even everybody. But, so I think it's, it's finding the right programming.
Anybody else? All right.
All right, so that's our, oh, sorry, we do have more.
All right, so when we look at this pillar, two bright spots that we have identified is obviously an increase in scores from our survey questions, as Bobby shared. And also, we have learned how to better align metrics as we have gone through these different, different areas. And then I'll let Bobby share the process. Share action process.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was like, what are you talking? So then the one bright spot that we wanted to talk about for the action plan is that we did launch the Public School Podcast. So that's something that I did join with Sarah Hornick on, and that's, if you haven't listened to it yet, it's available on Apple and Spotify and YouTube, and if, we do have a website and Facebook as well. But that is sharing the great stories of our district, staying away from, sometimes we can get caught up in the negative that happens and just life that happens here in the district, but we're sharing the great stories of people and what they do. We ask each person five distinct questions or five questions. Like what was your favorite cafeteria food? And it's just super fun, or it's also like, what did you, what was your favorite thing to play in recess, and why do you believe in public education? So just another way to spread some great things through our community of Rapid City Area Schools.
When did it start?
The podcast?
The podcast.
It launched on the seventh. Did it launch on the seventh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I just didn't know anything about.
And part of that is we haven't done a huge push on it yet because we want to have some episodes banked up, so that way it's not just one podcast. If you want to go through community interest, you can go through and find what episode you want to listen to. So that is part of, we're working with Home Slice for the podcast, and that's part of the process with it, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then two barriers that we're seeing for this community pillar is buy-in on surveys. What we mean by that would be having managers, principals, and everyone in the district kind of buy-in and check in to make sure we're having participation in surveys. So I can send out a survey from the district level to all parents and caregivers, but if we don't have that building buy-in or the teacher buy-in behind it as well, pushing families, sending those reminders, we're not going to see the results that we want to, and we did see a decline in responses this year. And then another barrier is just we need more clarification.
Um, and then another barrier is just we need more clarification on how the board wants to be involved for this pillar as well, if they want to be involved.
Alright, and then next steps or next um, action plan. Really it is, although it's one next action, changing trackable, trackable metrics, um, and it's in multiple areas. So we've already identified the app downloads that Bobby had mentioned on the very first slide for this pillar. Um, but then we're also looking at being able to um, to track partnerships, maybe at the K-12 level. Um, not our K-8 in addition to our 912 level. Um, as well as obviously looking at a trackable metric for volunteers.
Alright, I don't think they have any questions. Alright, thank you, ladies.
For the uh, staff pillar tonight, Mr. Manuel is um, the pillar champion, uh, but he's out of the district uh, for uh, some time here. So um, Ms. Keegan joins us and she's gonna kind of walk us through the information there.
Thank you very much. So this evening we're gonna go over the staff pillar. And this is focused mainly on the um, attraction and retainment of our teachers. Um, so one of our first pieces that I want to talk about is the number of applicants. And um, as we look at that metric, our goal was 5,550. Um, and we did not meet that goal. Now that number is at the end of um, May, so June 1. Um, cause that's what we could pull from. So we aren't really comparing apples to apples, but we would not be on goal or on course to make that goal. And so we're just owning that metric as it is. And we've done some reflection on it. That really the number of applicants is something that's really kind of outside of our control. So instead we want to look at, and it can vary greatly, and we're not saying that they're qualified applicants, we're just saying applicants. So we're kind of adjusting that metric a little bit for our next round to find something that's better suited and better serving our staff and our students. Um, to show us, are we actually filling our positions in a timely manner? So we're adjusting that metric. Um, the retention rate, our goal was 83%. We had an 82% retention rate. That's an increase of 1%, and I know that doesn't seem like a lot. But um, it really is when you look at national trends. Um, we're holding on to the people and that does, has a huge impact on our students and our staff. Um, just keeping the experience within our school system is huge. Uh, then we move into the multiple endorsements.
Excuse me?
Oh, yes. Please go ahead.
One of the things that we had talked about the last presentation is as, as we see that it's increased, and I don't know if this is possible, I'm just saying it's one of the things that we talked about. It, and I think actually Mrs. Stephenson said, what did you do to, what, what worked in your strategies of working on these numbers work? And again, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, and I'll go into that a little bit with our retention. We've had some adjustments that we've made, um, but for pieces to keep and retain our teachers and staff within our various areas that we'll talk about. Yep.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Um, the next piece we get into is the multiple endorsements. This one becomes actually a measurement that we receive from the Department of Education. So we just received that for the 24, 25 school year. Um, you can see how that compares. Um, this is also another issue that we have with this measurement. It's really difficult for us to have any measurement along the way and assess and have formative data that we can look at. It's really a piece that we get at the end of the year. And it's highly dependent on our staff that we have, um, specifically our certified staff. Um, so that metric we, we increased, but we did not meet our, meet our goal. Um, so that is why it's yellow. Uh, but as you can see, that has a lot of different data pieces within it. So even within meeting the goal, um, it becomes a little bit tough to measure. Uh, the pa- the last piece that we come is to the staff experience survey mean. We had a goal of 3.83. We um, did not make that or we, we've got a 3.82, which is an increase. Um, and so with that, we're really looking at how are we helping our staff feel more connected? Feeling that they are um, valued in the work that they do. And we think that that also has an impact on the retention rate as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask a question on that slide before.
Yeah, please do.
Um, I've said it before and I'm gonna say it again. And Nicole, I know you did not have anything to do with the metric. But the absolute number of applicants is totally meaningless. And if the retention rate goes up, then the number of applicants goes down because you don't have as many openings. So both of these metrics, as far, uh, the metric for retention, I'm very interested in. The number of applicants makes no sense to me. It makes no sense. Like I, it doesn't tell me anything for how we're doing. And the number, a discrepancy like this has to have an explanation other than, well, we're just failing to receive applicants. I know that's not true. We're getting applicants for openings. But if o- the number of openings went down or because we're retaining teacher or we're retaining staff more, then that number goes down. It's just meaningless. I really wish we could find a better one.
Well, we're also retaining at a similar rate. So that doesn't mean we have less openings. If our retention is the same over time. It, and it's, it's just we have fewer applicants to fill those positions that are open.
Hmm. I would, I mean, I think it would be so easy to just give us a number of applicants per open position. And then we could compare if the, if the goal is to recruit more applicants, then give us applicants per open position of a, a number doesn't mean much to me.
I think the issue that we came up with the applicants per open position is it doesn't give us a really good reading if the applicants are qualified for the position.
But number of applicants doesn't give us that reading either.
And so we're looking to change that metric too, just like you said. So we're looking to change it to the number of unfilled positions at a point in time. To, and then average length of time to fill those positions because that's really what impacts our kids.
Yes.
Is how long does that sit open? And so we figured that was a much better metric that we could look at, that we could pull data from in a much quicker way to determine if we're making an impact.
Yeah, I would argue that that doesn't tell you quality applicants either. Like if you fill a open position in two weeks, but it's with someone who has a provisional certification, then I mean, it's full, but it's maybe not the highest quality.
And we can't hire anyone on that.
Or, or you know what I'm saying. Like the one that President signs off on and we request from the Department of Education.
Right, right.
Sorry.
But I will, I mean, I, that is a metric that we use. I mean, we are able to, the Department of Education, that is an actual certified teacher based on those requirements. So I mean, I can't discount an alternative certification teacher just because they're looking for a different avenue. To pursue teaching.
So are you saying, we're not gonna be able to have a metric that's on the quality of applicants?
Uh, well, the quality of applicants are gonna vary. So if, let's give, can I give an example, Dr. Strasser? Okay, so um, let's say we have a clerical position that sits open. Um, and we don't have, and so I'm not using a teaching example. And we don't have applicants for, that have the skillset that we would want for that position. We can leave that open, thankfully, right? I mean, yes, it is, hinders our system, but it doesn't have the impact of an open teaching position that thirty-some kids depend upon. So that sits a little bit differently. Um, but when we look at open teaching positions in the middle of the year, those are hard to fill as well. So I mean, what, at this point, what we're trying to do, we're trying to fill all of our teaching positions. I mean, we've heard at various board meetings, how many sped teachers we need, how many elementary teachers we're still looking for. And so it's not that we're not looking. It's really just makes it dependent and upon so many different factors of do they live in the area? I mean, we've had some people that have looked at our online teaching position that aren't from Rapid City. Well, they need to be here because this is an elementary position where the students actually come in in person. So there's just pieces of it that makes it so, and we have everything from bus drivers to teachers, to clerical staff, to food service workers. And that's one of the pieces with this staff pillar that makes it really interesting because we have so many different needs for all those different positions. Mr. Sassy just presented last week on, was it last week? Bus drivers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on bus drivers. And so we're making adjustments just because of the competition that we're facing for specific people with a CDL. Um, so it's just, it's so different.
Hmm. Yeah. I love changing number of applicants to point in time vacancies. I think that's a very good idea. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to point out is you said that it went, multiple endorsements went up, but I see that it went down.
That went, okay. So this is, I compare this to um, because there's so many different pieces. Where do you really say you met it? Um, so, and this is a metric that we don't really calculate. It comes from the Department of Education and it's their determination um, of our certified positions. Um, so we're not in love with that metric because it is, there's so many pieces of it. So if our alternative certification teacher um, may have a very small list of things that they can teach. But they can teach the one that they're certified to teach and that's what we need them for. Um, so we're really having some discussion about maybe if there's a different metric, if there's something that we can pull data from. I'm not really positive on what we may move forward with, with that.
Hmm. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Swan?
Thank you, President Carr. Um, I'm, I disagree with the idea of number of applicants. I, uh, the part about this, what I'm disagreeing with is, is probably Christine. I think all, all this information is useful. I mean, if you drop from 5,400 to 3,800, who's not applying? You know what I mean? And do we have a, a robust recruiting system? For teachers, are we getting out to Black Hill State? Are we getting out to Ogalala Lakota College? What, you know, I mean, is it the praxis? I mean, things like that, the teaching positions. But also like if we're recruiting bus drivers, I mean, are we, are we strengthening our relationship with Western Dakota VOTech? I mean, are we reaching out across the state to see if somebody will move to Rapid City? To, to take a position? Those are types of things, you know, I, I think that, I, I, I think the number of applicants, I, I truly believe the idea of reaching that goal is possible. I do think that the more people we have in the mix, the better the chances are we have with hiring somebody. So um, as far as the multiple endorsements, man, who has 25 endor- uh, 25 endorsements? So, but the piece that I'm, the piece I'm getting at is that you can, there's no way possible you can use all 25 endorsements in one position. And that's the, that's the piece. I mean, I'm really surprised that's part of, part of a, a measure, you know what I mean? But just simply because, I know it comes from the state, but um, I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I probably hold anywhere from 10 to, 10 to 15 endorsements myself, but I'm like, it just comes with the territory, you know, your coursework, your, you know, and they start adding up and then pretty soon it's, it's there. So I'm, I'm, you know, the number of multiple endorsements is, is, I, I guess, are there opportunities for everybody to use those endorsements? I, I just don't see the, the reasoning behind that. Um, and then I'll shut up after this one, but uh, the staff experience as well, I believe that is one of our, I, uh, when I got on this board, I think President Carr, I think Jamie, Michael, we're all part of this conversation of saying, we want to recruit every team, you know what I mean? And increasing the, uh, increasing the, I guess, our staff experience, you know what I mean? And making it a great place to work, you know what I mean? Those are, those are something that I, I look at and I, and I appreciate that number. Um, I know we didn't meet the goal, but boy, that's, that's quite an increase. And I really, I, I appreciate it just uh, just in that fact. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I would like to, just a couple of things, points with that. Um, the number of applicants, I'm not positive on. I can very honestly say that would be for HR. And that is not the part of the pillar that I work with. Um, so that would be something that we can find out possibly and give back to you. Um, the other piece with the multiple endorsements, what that does is it gives us some flexibility of where we can put those teachers. So I think of a secondary si- setting. Um, if that teacher can teach, uh, for example, I'm only certified in secondary biology. That doesn't mean, that means I cannot teach a chemistry class. I can't teach a physical science class. I can't teach a physics class. I'm very limited in just secondary biology. Um, so it makes it a little bit tougher for high school teachers to, or high school admin to create their master schedule if they have those limitations. Did you want to add to that? Okay. Um, the other piece about the exploit, oh, go ahead. Nope. Yeah, I did. Um, so with, then I'll, one second, Michael. Um, so with the employee experience survey, I do agree with you. Uh, this is my 25th year in Rapid City Area Schools. So I completely agree. We want people to come work here. I'm the biggest cheerleader you're gonna find for what we have and the good stuff we have going on. So I completely agree with that. Yes.
Um, on the first two, I just wanted to say like what Christine was saying, I think is they're, they're, they're in disagreement. We want that first one to approach zero if the second one is approaching 100, right? And so that's, I think they are both good data points individually, but yeah, like we can't meet both goals. Um, and then with the endorsements, it seems like they all went down. Do you know why?
Well, I can, I'll be really honest with you. The, the, the old people, uh, put myself in that. So people who have been in the district for a longer time are gonna have more endorsements because the DOE changed their certification requirements to earn all those additional endorsements. So um, I, I'm just gonna tell you, I really want to go check what Walt Swan is, an educator 411, because I'm assuming, I'm assuming that he's got quite a few endorsements and that's just based on the fact of when he got his teaching certificate. I would make that assumption. Um, cause a lot of us got grandfathered in under that system. Um, new teachers have to take a praxis exam for a lot of the things that they want to be endorsed in. Um, so I mean, I'm not saying that they can't change the endorsements. I needed to get ELA certified for middle school, six through eight. I had to take a praxis. I was certified for ELA six through eight. Okay, woo. Um, the tough part is I had to pay for that praxis myself. Why would I go add an endorsement? Unless I have a reason to. Like my principal said, I need you to teach this. I need you to go take the test. Check. I'll do it. Now, we don't have that same thing anymore. Most of the time we try to offer some financial assistance if it's something that helps our system. Um, but in the case of um, endorsements, it's because the DOE's system has changed. So that metric, as we lose our more experienced teachers to retirement, then, or leaving our school district, then it's gonna impact that number.
And the total has gone down as well though, correct? And so like, where did those thirty-some, forty-some teachers go? Like, like if I, if I add up the total from last year, it's looks like it's, I don't know, 900-ish. And if you add up the total this year, it's close to 850.
I do not know.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that data set came from HR.
Yeah.
I would speculate a lot of that is just due to retirements.
Okay. So, okay, so trying to just wrap my mind around all the.
It, it might determine when the data is pulled. I don't know.
That is all groups. This is just teachers. So.
Yes.
Teacher went down a little bit. Other groups went up. Okay.
Teachers also have to note which endorsement areas they would like to be considered for. So if they don't want that on their application or on their assignment or their certification, they can choose not to mark that as a consideration.
For our viewers at home, I'll just reiterate what Dr. Comer said. Um, so teachers now, when they go in to add uh, or to get their teaching certificate, they have to add which specific endorsements they want added to their license. So a great example, um, I have a minor in sped. Um, I can say whether I want that added to my teaching license or not. And I do not have a minor in sped, so I'm sorry, Dr. Comer.
Ms. Urban?
Uh, I think you answered my question, but I was thinking, well, endorsements must not expire. Right? They just, and so if we're, we're really short in sped and we're just grabbing teachers from positions that they maybe don't want to be in, that would be a reason to take it off of your. Yeah. More endorsements and they're just hiding.
Well, I do, I will, I mean, so as part of this pillar champion, I do a lot of work with our teachers for the retention. Also kind of part of the recruitment, but like helping them navigate the certification system. Helping them decipher what they need to do to add those endorsements. Um, my teach, I want to go change to a position that would, I would teach XYZ and I'm not certified in that. What coursework or praxis test would I need to take that? Sometimes it becomes a little bit tricky. And I don't mean tricky, but the DOE website just becomes like, if you're not one who uses it regularly, you just don't know all the clicks to make to find the stuff you want. Alright, moving on to our bright spots. Thank you, Dr. Strasser. Um, we are going to look at the uh, bonus, or the bright spot as being the retention rate is an increase of 1%. We're taking that as a huge win for our team. Um, because anything that's in the positive on our retention rate is a win for us. That is a huge impact on our students, um, a huge impact. That is a huge impact on our students, a huge impact on just our, our staff as a whole, feeling more connected to each other. The employee experience survey, we had an increase on this one over our baseline. We're going to continue to work on that and I'm going to talk more about that on the next slide of how. One of the bright spots that we looked at within this action cycle, so that's the forty-five day cycle, is the transfer portal creation for teachers. This was an alternative that was created for that, or for, I'm sorry, a streamlined system for staff members seeking internal transfers and makes the experience more transparent and supportive of our staff. It also helps with that retention rate. So, if someone wants to move within our school district, this created a more seamless process. So, not only does this help our staff members or educators pursue new professional opportunities within our district, it also ensures that we're better aligning our talent with the specific needs of each school. Any questions on that one?
It doesn't look like.
All right. As we look at barriers and challenges for this one, we talked a little bit about it, but having a small candidate pool, instead of a pool, we need an ocean for all of the intricacies of our district. We don't just, we aren't just looking for teachers. We also need bus drivers and food service workers. All of these pieces make the system go. So, this is just a general issue within, that we're facing. Major barrier is the ongoing shortage of qualified applicants. We continue to find that our applicant pool is smaller than we would like, making it difficult to fill positions, especially hard to staff roles or specialized areas, but it's not unique to us. And we know that we're, like many other districts, trying to navigate and do what we can to bring in people that want to apply here. I'm good. Oh.
Oh. Yeah, this, this may be more of an HR question.
Oh, probably.
I just, you know, they said the one size doesn't fit all and just like thinking outside the box. And do we know, like, do we have very many, especially when we're looking at our non-certified? Like, do we say, okay, we've got six pair positions? What if we said three halftime positions? I just, in my, like, and I get that this is anecdotal in my little bubble world, but I see a lot of, like, particularly moms, but parents going, well, I want to work, but I can't like afford daycare for my kids. So, if I could be, you know, it could be a parent for half a day or, you know, like, are, are we going there? Or are, and I get it's complicated, like, in the system and with FTS and all that, so maybe it's too hard. I, I don't know.
I would say there are areas where we are going there and, and are trying to go there. Specifically, working with the elementary principals, we're very open to candidates who say, well, I, I can only work halftime or have some kind of stipulation. And, and we talk weekly about how can we still bring that person in? What does that look like? Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, for, for various reasons. So, we, we have gone there in particular about filling elementary teaching positions, but I know we're going to be more flexible more often.
Thanks.
Stephenson.
Yeah, I just, I don't know who to thank for the transfer portal. I don't know how that happened, but that's definitely something that we hear about from teachers. It was a source of frustration, so I'm really glad that you took some action on that.
Thank you, that would be human resources. Okay, so our next action in staffing, we're taking some proactive steps this next year. One of them is rounding, and I don't know if many of you have heard of that through some of your work, but this would be the, increasing the frequency of the rounding throughout the school year and increasing that to all staff within buildings and even within reaching that out further to our managers for food service and busing as well. And this gives us a much better understanding of what the staff need in order to be able to succeed within their positions and the supports that we can give them to keep them where they are. Even today, and I'm going to go a little off script, but today we had a principal talk about how rounding was so powerful in their building and they are pretty sure that one of their staff members stayed the entire year because of the consistent rounding and touching base with, what can I do to help you? Actually, I'll read you the rounding questions. I think it gives you a better idea of the, what it actually is. So, it's four questions. It's about ten to fifteen minutes with every staff member, one-on-one. So, over the past week or so, what's going well? Question two is, what's getting in the way of doing your best work? Question three, who's been especially helpful to you? And this is really also helping us celebrate some of our staff who are supporting staff members so well. And then, is there anything I could do to be helpful to you? So, going through those questions, and if principals want to add others, they can, but it's really the foundation of creating a relationship with the hiring manager or with the principal and the staff member to feel supported, to find out how we can support you. And they are going to be doing these this year four times? Ideally, every ninety days? Okay, three times.
So, to, to expand on that a little bit, because you're going to hear more and more. Rounding is just a very simple way to have intentional conversation that is consistent and it helps us be responsive. It's very much like the surveys, the annual surveys. We want to be responsive to the feedback there. With rounding, we can do it more frequently, but it's very intentional and, and allows us to have conversations across our buildings and therefore across our district. And we believe what we're hearing from our principals and, and other leaders throughout the district, that rounding is one of the, the main reasons that we're having, that we had success on our surveys. And I, I think just some of the positive steps are, are, are direct result of intentional communication and, and trying to be responsive. So, I mentioned that stoplight approach before. That's something that connects directly to rounding because we want to be able to say, what can we do right now based on the feedback we heard? What is something that is close by that, that we'll work on? And the red, I'm sorry, we can't get to it right now, this is why. So, so again, communication across the board and, and with our staff in particular. As Ms. Keegan was, was pointing out, we feel that it has made some direct impacts on the results within this pillar. And that's.
No hand back.
Thank you.
Well, let's move to our facilities. Mr. Clement will join Mr. Sassy up here and go.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
That rounding, that done just between principals and teachers?
We, we say, we say principals and teachers, but we also want them rounding with their whole staff. And, and we're building, I was going to bring it up a little bit later, but we're, we're building it so that there's intentional times. This year, I just said, hey, you have to round with each staff member one time before the end of the first semester. So, we're going to have conversations about how do we do that now in the middle of the year and then at the end of the year? And that'll get us more intentional with stay interviews, exit interviews, because that is a process of rounding as a whole. So, closing feedback loops throughout the course of a year and what do those look like? So, we spend a lot of time trying to build up our knowledge and understanding so that we can be responsive in carrying it out. And we're going to do more of that next year. And yes, our directors do that with their staff as well. And, and we're getting just a lot of really good feedback and, and responsiveness to what our people are telling us.
I ask that. I'm, I'm interested in, in the board incorporating that. We have three employees and maybe we don't think about it because we're in such contact, but we don't ask those questions, right?
Right.
Check in. I'd like to do that.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Strasser. So, reviewing the, the facility pillar, we, we've talked quite a lot about the facility pillar. It's been front and center in a lot of ways. Again, just a reminder, the, the statement around the pillar is that RCS will ensure safe, modern, effective learning environments by building, improving and maintaining facilities to meet changing educational needs. So, a lot said there. Reviewing where we were in terms of goals as we came into the year, we had really two success measures that we wanted to look at. The first was the RCS facility standard. Of course, that being pulled from the performance index based on the, the criteria and the scores of each of the individual buildings. Our baseline for twenty-three, twenty-four, as we were developing the plan, was a fifty-three current average scoring. The goal for the twenty-five school year was to move that score to fifty-four and a half, so a one and a half point increase. Where we are currently at this point in time is fifty-eight and a half to fifty-nine and a half current average. So, we're well ahead of pace. The reason that there is some fluctuation in that, as, as Mr. Clement could add detail to, is one, what we've talked about in the past is one of the challenges of the facilities aspect in, in the capital outlay process is sort of this erratic nature at times of how projects are progressing throughout the year. Obviously, sometimes the best laid plans and what we have in terms of projects coming into the year for various reasons don't always get executed or, or held up in terms of progress. So, we have a, a little bit of fluctuation just in terms of where those current, some of those current projects are sitting and where we anticipate them as we move towards the, the end of this month. The second was the, the impact project plan. And again, a reminder, the, the impact project plan was going to draw both on the long-range, long-term planning of the district in terms of where we were, were headed with large-scale projects, combined with the facilities master plan. So, essentially going in, combining those two areas and pulling out what, what we called the impact project plan, meaning this is really what the, the big picture projects were going to look like for the next three, five, seven years for the district. So, our baseline in, in twenty-three, twenty-four is we were still in development of that plan. As we moved into this year, we wanted to finish that and, and begin to execute on that plan, which we have done. So, again, that goal has been accomplished. And, and really, one of the primary things that we wanted to do as, as part of that plan was reduce the quantity of projects and again, really draw our focus to those high-impact projects. I would say moving away from the historical process of the district in terms of, of how we spent our capital outlay resource allocation in trying to touch every single building every single year and sometimes doing that in a way that, that didn't move the needle and didn't get us the return on investment we were looking for. And so, the idea being, we're, we're going to, we're going to draw that focus back to what we've laid out in the strategic, strategic plan as our most important criteria. And how do we increase the performance of our facilities and hopefully impact the academic environment? And that really was, was the focus around that area. So, the, the pillar bright spots, again, the, the goal coming into the year was to move the district average one and a half points. We moved it six and a half points. That's really fantastic i- in terms of progress. I think the important thing to note there is the idea that we picked a lot of low-hanging fruit in this first year, meaning that there was a lot to address in terms of projects that, that would directly impact that performance index and, and ultimately increase that score rapidly. Like anything in life, the better you get at anything, the more difficult it is to, to see progress. And so, I think as we move into the future, we're not always going to see six and a half point jumps every year. We're going to maintain that one-point-five goal and hopefully exceed that every single year, but it's going to get more difficult as we continue to improve our facilities, which is a great problem to have. Obviously, we'd rather have dramatically improved facilities and, and, and progress being more difficult than low-hanging fruit and making big jumps because we, we weren't able to address those issues. Again, we, we wanted to reduce the number of total projects and really focus on high-impact projects. I think in a lot of the materially, we, material we have reviewed in terms of capital outlay, you can see that in, in the projects that were selected as we move into next year for capital outlay. Much less emphasis on trying to touch something at every school and, and really drawing all those arrows in the same direction. We talked about that a lot with this pillar in particular. You know, moving from the random acts of improvement where arrows are pointed everywhere and starting to draw all those arrows in the same direction. And I feel like that's been highly successful. A bright spot related to the, the leading short-cycle action plan. Again, facility master plan is done. And really where we'll focus our, our efforts over the next couple of months is trying to lay out the timeline of what that impact project plan is going to look like. Again, that's complex just based on the idea that resource availability is a major component of, of how we can move forward. And so, we'll have both a plan that would include if a bond was successful, if a bond wasn't successful and how we address those things. And so, we have to be really nimble and flexible in, in how we approach that and how we set up the district for success as we move into the future. I think Mr. Clement is going to cover the next two slides.
All right. So, two of the barriers and challenges that we have, first one being the unpredictability of the market and urban sprawl. Obviously, those are two separate things, but one thing that they have in common is that we have no control over them. The market is going to do what the market does. The city is going to continue growing like it already is. It's two challenges that are really big in what we deal with. We forecast projects a year out in advance. Sometimes it can be hard to forecast construction costs a year out, a year out. So, and that gets even more complex once we start looking at projects five, six, ten years out in the future. So, it can be a little hard to plan there, but we're working, working through that like we always do.
One, one quick comment on that. I, I think that's a really excellent point, Jade. Some of this gets into some economic discussion, so I apologize if I bore you with it, but I do think it's important to point out, part, part of the idea of unpredictability and volatility of a market is not only from like a, a microeconomic cycle, like a really short one-year, two-year cycle, but also from more of like a, a zoomed-out macroeconomic cycle of five, seven and ten years. Jade and I have talked a lot about the idea that in ninety-nine percent of cases, building today is always going to be cheaper than building in a year or five years or seven years. And so, the, the volatility of the market and, and how that market moves and how that impacts construction costs as we zoom out and we look at that over time, can, can have a major influence on what happens. I think the South project is a great example of that. When we were looking at that project as part of the bond and, and projecting costs, that building was projected at forty-five million just a few years later. And granted, there's an asterisk that, that there was a worldwide pandemic, but a few years later, that, that building cost was up in the seventy-million-dollar range. So, you know, a thirty to forty percent price increase in, in a very short period of time. So, I, I think it's really important in, in that, that's a major factor when we zoom out and we look at the unpredictability of the market and, and how we respond to those things.
Sorry. Nope, you're good. I think that's a good description. Urban sprawl is obviously something that we also don't have any control over, but we also have been able to build good relationship, relationships with the cities so we can at least stay as in front of it as possible. Obviously, something we just deal with. We don't have any choice. The second item is timeline to complete the facility master plan. It's contingent upon funding availability. And saying that out loud, I don't know if I like the wording because the facility master plan will never truly be complete. Because once we get to the end of the big items on the facility master plan, we're going to have to move the goalposts. So, if we're looking at checking the big boxes on the facility master plan, we're obviously talking about funding and that's kind of what Koi alluded to on looking at the timeline versus, with a bond versus without. So, obviously, those are two very, very different things.
Good thoughts. One other comment on urban sprawl, just to go back for one, one second. I, I do think Jade makes a great point. A lot of that is out of control of, of the district in terms of how the community is moving. I do think that some of the hard work that, that we've done, Jade's done, everyone involved in, in some of this planning process has done in terms of building relationships with city personnel, county personnel. We can do a better job of having influence over what. We can do a better job of having influence over what that looks like and do a better job of being part of that process in in drawing the community to where it works for the district as well. I think we do have the ability to do that in the sense that schools are very, very important to developers. And and they love to develop where a school is going to be, where a school is potentially going to be. And they they obviously want that to happen. And so we do have influence in the sense that as we become more and more involved in those conversations and we continue to improve those relationships, that we can start to influence what that sprawl looks like and and how we set the district up for success in terms of facilities to address that.
My hand is up. I'm just gonna say I, Koi, you just took words out of my mouth. I think it's definitely a challenge, the city just moving out and out and out. But I did want to compliment both of you on working. It's it's not inevitable. And we don't, we don't have total control, but we are a force among many about where the city develops. And and I really appreciate that you worked with city planners and that you're forging relationships with them. I think it's hugely important to us and important to the town, so, or to our community. So appreciate that.
Great point.
Okay. Oh, sorry. So as far as next action steps, we're going to continue focusing on high-impact projects. So one thing Koi had mentioned kind of at the beginning there is that it's gonna, it's gonna become more challenging to continue moving that needle as we, as we move forward. So in the next couple of years, we're gonna kind of run out, run out of the easy, I'm doing air quotes, easy projects that really move the needle and we're gonna have to start digging into the much more challenging high-dollar projects. So I mean, continue focusing on those, continue knocking those, knocking the ones off the performance index and replacing them with some threes. But I mean, that's the, that's the next big step there. And then the second one is addressing the outliers that impact the facility performance index. So once we kind of get to that plateau where we're only moving one and a half points per year, we're really gonna have to focus in and find those outliers. Obviously, we have a couple schools that rank relatively low on the performance index. Finding an effort to either offset those scores or improve those scores. So as we get closer and closer to leveling out, we're going to have to chase those outliers.
Any questions? All right.
Okay, so we're going to transition to the student pillar. We're gonna have Ms. Ms. White, Dr. Comer, Ms. Strong, Ms. Roberts join us up here. I do know this is getting long. I would say if you need to stand and stretch, that's fine while we do this. I don't think that will preclude you from asking any questions or anything like that, so.
Or do you all need a break?
All right, in three minutes, we've got two board members on it.
Okay.
No, you're doing good. Jamie helped you out. She gave me a snack so that calmed the beast for a while. Wow, that wasn't bad. Well, for me, I guess, I mean, considering.
It just, yeah.
All right. All right, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna jump into the last pillar, which is the student pillar. And I'm gonna turn it over to our student pillar team and let them walk us through. And and just so you know, we did take a little, little different approach to how we share out the information. But we do that for a reason. So Ms. Strong.
Good evening, Board. I would like to begin our conversation on the student pillar by talking about the columns that make up our student pillar. In our student pillar, it's not just one department that impacts our students. It's not just one group. It really is these four primary columns that make up the strength and impact the daily lives of our students. We have our academic column, our behavior column, our attendance column, and our special services column. And each of the four of us have an area of specialty in each one of these columns. And so tonight, we're going to bring data to you in our areas of specialty in each one of these columns, knowing that without a balance and a structured approach and support for each one of these columns, that weakens the entire student pillar. So that's how we're going to roll out the data and the conversation to you tonight.
Like Dr. Strasser was saying, the student pillar, saving the best for last, we kind of revamped how we are presenting our information. We're gonna present our in information with next steps first. And one thing that we actually are doing is our next steps is a tiered alignment. So we finally have a multi-tiered system of support in academics, behavior, attendance, and special services. With academics, the tiered alignment is the P L Cs. With the P L Cs, they'll be incorporating data to ensure that instruction not only hits or meets grade-level standards, but also those interventions for the tiered and strategic tiers. This means that we are meeting students where they're at to get them to where they need to be. With behavior, our tiered support is our behavior academies. With behavior academies, we are addressing skills, specific skills to our students that are in our tiers so they can align and have what they need to be able to do with our tier-one behavior, which consists of conscious discipline and P P I S. With attendance, we have that district attendance committee. We have already began to identify and incorporate a tiered support on how we address attendance. And those tiers are based off of what's identified with the Department of Ed, what is good, warning, and chronic absenteeism. Our attendance tiers will be aligned with those seven lenses of what compromise a whole child, the family engagement tier, student engagement, behavior, mental health, physical health, academic support, extended learning, and basic needs.
So when we look at our results of our our pillar, we first look at that student survey data. When beginning the strategic plan, the district really focused on people. So this is a focus of our school culture and building relationships with the employees, parents, and students. So when we look at our survey information that we looked at, we achieved and exceeded the goal with our student survey data in measuring that welcoming building climate. So the first one, I like going to school each day. That increased by five-point-one-eight percent from our baseline, and so we surpassed our goal. And then the other, I feel like I belong to school. That increased by seven-point-two-five percent. So we had some nice increases with those. The student pillar is the only pillar to be measured by those percentages. And why we did that, we focused on the two questions and really looking at how many students are rating a four and a five to get a better idea of how many students really were in that that group of category of saying this is where we feel we lie.
And and I think that's, that's an important distinction from all the other data that you've seen from the surveys. Those were mean scores. This is just the top box. And we felt strongly when we put this together a year ago that we wanted to to focus on those top two categories and seeing how we could move the needle that way.
With attendance, the baseline score was at eighty-one percent with the goal at eighty-three percent. We did score our attendance at yellow, which means we maintained from the baseline. However, there's important information to know when those goals were created a year ago. Those goals for attendance was specifically created before the O C R voluntary agreement. So that goal was set. However, with the O C R agreement, July and August, the district really revamped on how we look at attendance. For example, there was develop a consistent processes and procedures to train staff on entering attendance data, along with training on which attendance codes are needed on when you enter that data as well as attendance reporting. We have also also strengthened our relationship with the state's attorney office. And those are really big contributing factors on how we maintain. So when we are talking about monitoring and adjusting, technically, this year would be our baseline data for an attendance goal with every measure we have put into place.
And if I could add on on to that, this is, the attendance rate is what you see on the state report card. So this is our our data pool that we're trying to be consistent with how the state determines our attendance rate, which we typically see in late fall and it is on the report card. So that's, that's our viewpoint there. But as Ms. White indicates, we've, we've done a lot of resetting around our data tracking with attendance and and our behavior, which, yeah.
As Dr. Strasser was alluding to, because we have put new systems and and processes into place for tracking attendance, we've also done implemented the same processes for behavior as well. So we wanted to ensure that across the district, we were reporting behavior incidences similarly. What, when we developed our baseline data, we had a tremendous amount of inconsistencies on what was being reported and the frequency of what of what was being reported. So you see a large jump, almost twenty-five hundred incidences this year, when really maybe that's not a jump, it's just consistent reporting. So we're going to actually look at this data and utilize this year's data as our baseline, knowing that this is our first year of consistent behavior reporting across the district. Utilize this number to move forward, recalibrate, and readjust our goal, goals moving forward. So again, great things came of what we've done with the resolution. And we're looking forward to seeing the results and and the improvement that we can grow as a result of maintaining this consistency.
Well, we're talking about the academics. There are two different interim assessments with Acadient's K one and the N W E A map for grades two through eight. We did not meet the K one Acadian school that we set this year. This year was our highest year for math growth that we've ever had in kindergarten. And it was our second-highest year for math growth in first grade. And in reading, it was our second-highest year for growth in both kindergarten and first grade. So in Acadian's achievement this year, it was very comparable to our achievement last year. But when we, this goal was set, and then we tested in the fall to look at what our baseline for the school year was, we found that that number was actually lower than it was the year before. So our growth was very similar, where again, it was our top year, our kindergarten for top year in math growth, second year in math growth for first grade. And then the second year of seven, both of them as our highest for the literacy. So the second-highest year for kindergarten and first grade in literacy growth of seven years. So we did see some really nice achievement, but we did not meet that goal. For the MAP assessment in grades two through eight, we did see growth above last school year, though not quite enough to meet our goal. We saw an improvement of nearly three percent in math and nearly two percent in E L A. And our eighth-grade scores saw the highest growth. So that's why that one is yellow. These two assessments, the Acadians and MAP, have different measurement criteria, and they provide two different outcomes. Acadium show, Acadian shows proficiency and MAP shows growth. We as a team are evaluating our goals for next year. Are we analyzing the right data? Are we setting appropriate goals based on our data? We're going to be looking at a lot of that over the summer and making some determinations for what we want to look at for that for next school year. Regarding the pre-A C T test for our ninth and tenth grade students, we did see growth slightly above what we had set for our goal. This year, the pre-A C T was given once, just in the spring, instead of twice. For the last few years, we had been giving the pre-A C T in the fall and in the spring. But that one is green because we did meet and in fact exceed our goal for the pre-A C T. Our A C T scores did decline less than a point, so we did not meet our goal. That one is in red. Starting next school year, the A C T is replacing the South Dakota Achievement Test for the first time for all South Dakota eleventh-grade students. And they will be taking the A C T statewide, which Rapid City Area Schools has been doing for a number of years, offering that opportunity for all of our students to take the A C T at no cost. And but that's something that we did see a slight decline in our A C T scores there. I do want to take this opportunity to talk about a few other data points about our student academic performance. I do want to take this opportunity to talk about a few other data points about our student academic performance. We had a hundred and seventeen AP tests taken this spring across eight subjects. It is a seventeen percent increase over the year before when six hundred and seventy eight tests were taken. Students also earned six hundred and fifteen certifications in areas such as OSHA, serves safe food handling, CPR, and the like. And for next year, twenty five, twenty six, our AP course registration has increased by two hundred and fifty. So we are seeing some really nice increases in our academics there. You want to go ahead with the next?
Yeah, just a second. So to be clear, I don't think it sounded quite right. Eight hundred and seventeen AP tests were taken, which is the seventeen percent increase year over year. So so we're seeing some strong gains there and just not represented directly on on this data. But I know we have some questions to.
Mr. Swan?
Thank you, President Carr. I would just like to comment on the major behavior referrals. I know that you've revamped it and started to talk a little bit more about consistent reporting and more everybody doing it the same way. This kind of this kind of data right here kind of really reflects the idea that, you know, I hear a lot, I guess, through my conversations with the people I'm I'm associating with, but I they are talking about principals not not reporting major behaviors because they are because they were afraid of the OCR or they were afraid that number would go up. And this this data doesn't reflect that, you know, it's just we we still we have an obligation to keep our kids safe, and we have an obligation to keep our classrooms safe. So I think that that this this kind of data will help me address some of those concerns. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Stephenson?
Thanks. I have a couple of questions about this chart. And I apologize, but I'm not sure I understood your explanation for the K one. Are you saying that because that's Acadian, that's not growth? Those are raw scores?
It's it is achievement scores. So the MAP is a growth score and the Acadian is achievement score. And I I just wanted you to be aware that those are different.
So even though the statistics, so the statistics here aren't for growth, but you believe that you have data that shows that there was growth?
Well, and what I'm saying is that that achievement scores improved. And so, for example, when I was talking about that this was the highest year I was saying growth, but it is the highest year of improvement or achievement that we saw in kindergarten in math since we started giving this test. So they jumped from the start of year or the the improvement from the start of year to the end of year. It was the biggest amount of improvement that we have seen in a single year for kindergarten since we started giving this using this assessment.
Because these kindergartners came in so low, so much lower than previous kindergartners.
Yeah.
And then but they grew, even though they didn't make the proficiency, they grew the most, they had the biggest growth.
But this data isn't growth then, because fifty three percent growth is better than fifty two percent.
But when they start low, we have a lower base, and it shows so on the Acadian says, Director Robert says, this is achievement. So if you, your achievement baseline is lower, and you achieve this much versus this and this much, that's a larger achievement growth. Does that make sense, even though the achievement is still lower than proficient? It's the largest achievement growth?
Okay.
Does that make?
It's a different cohort. The the Acadian is different than the MAP.
Yes.
I mean, because that MAP's growth, I can, that's a growth measurement. And we grew, or you know, our students had growth, but the Acadian isn't directly showing the growth.
They they are, and they're completely different students. So when we set the goal of our K one Acadian getting our math to fifty four percent, we hadn't met any of these kindergartners. We hadn't met fifty percent of the students that we would be testing.
Sure.
And so then when we tested them in the fall, those scores, the initial scores were lower than our beginning of year, our baseline the year before. So we saw a lot of improvement. We saw a lot of learning happen. But since they started at a lower point, we didn't meet what we had set as a goal before we had even met them.
Yep. And my understanding is that this does not include junior kindergarten?
Correct. That does not include junior kindergarten.
And then my final question, because our behavior data is so different this year than it has been. And I have just heard from so many teachers, oh, this was a really tough year. Why was it a hard year? Behaviors. This was a really tough year. Why was it hard? Behaviors. Can you tell more of a story of what happened with behaviors in our district rather, since this data doesn't, maybe isn't reflective of isn't accurate in an increase? Like, was there an increase, though?
I can speak on that. So last year, there was the autonomy on how you record minors by building. So for this year, with OCR voluntary agreement, it the district recognized that there was autonomy, and it was like, okay, no, there is a process through Skyward. For example, one building may have paper records of a minor or a Google Doc or Skyward, which really impacts. So the behavior you see on there is majors, and remember, there's that progressive discipline. So that really could impact when you have a major is if you have an anomaly or a misreporting of the minor. And in order to help with that, what we're going to get into and what we're talking about that MTSS tiered system approach is the behavior academies. So there's eight different academies with different skills that those kiddos may need so they can get back into the regular component of like a tiered support, which would be tiered one of either it being PBIS or conscious discipline.
So I, but my question is, I appreciate that, like what's what's going to happen going forward?
But your question is why?
No, I'm just saying, was it really a harder year? This looks like it was a ridiculously hard year for behaviors and discipline.
I think what was difficult is maintaining consistency. And so, as Kit alluded to, because they were maintaining the consistency, it looks like there are more. And when teachers have seven thousand things on their plate already, and then have to be consistent with reporting, it is a lot more difficult, and it is a lot more difficult to be mindful of how that consistency looks, not only in your room, but in the building. And so there was a lot of struggle of how that consistently consistency and alignment looked with the behaviors when we have behavior issues anyway. And the behavior issues, I want to also highlight that this isn't just, this isn't a Rapid City issue. This is a nationwide issue, and and I'll get more into that in a little bit, but this is a nationwide. I don't issue is even the right word, but this is a discussion that's happening on a nationwide scale. Every time I go to DC and we have our our panel discussion, behavior is brought up every single time in that panel discussion of how does it look in Rapid City and how does it look in Washington DC and Anchorage, Alaska? It's the same conversation. And so part of it is, you know, we're still in that post pandemic recovery period. And that and it's not that we can use that for excuse for forever, but it still is very real. In fact, we're going to talk about how even our national norm, the NWA, is recalibrating their test scores right now because post COVID. And there's we're we're still shifting, and we're still dealing with the fallout of that.
And if I could add, I think there's always a general feeling, what what's the most contentious thing that happens in in a teacher's day? It's it's any behavior issue. So what's the main thing we talk about? It's always behavior. And and that's okay, because that's the biggest challenge to educating kids. And and I think we're trying to be more accurate in reflecting the behaviors that we have, whether they're minor or major. So I think I think that factors in. But I do think, I mean, I I hear the same things you hear, and I've heard it for a number of years. We're always frustrated when when there's challenge in that that classroom. And we're trying to figure out how do we best support support our teachers to reduce those those situations and and hopefully make progress in this area.
If I were to sum it up, is it accurate to say like, we made progress in our data collection and our procedures? And moving forward, we want to make progress in helping these kids succeed by lowering behaviors. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the ACT. So how many years have we been requiring it? Are we are have we required it for everyone to take at all yet?
Um, we have asked all of our high school students to take the ACT. I wouldn't say it's required to the same level as the South Dakota Achievement Test. Because of some of the things that are tied to that with the DOE, there are certainly some students with disabilities that we know haven't really needed to take the ACT. So that's something we haven't had them do. But with the change in reporting and getting rid of the South Dakota Achievement Test, the DOE will require that they take the ACT instead. So we will have higher numbers of students taking the ACT next year. It won't be a significant amount, but it will be some, and I do anticipate that that would and could have some impact on that data.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Are they expecting it to go down?
Yes, I would anticipate that it will go down. Yes.
Everyone is afraid of their data going down, and it will, because everywhere that this is this has been tried in in other states. The data goes down, and then people react to that. And then changes come. So we'll 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 see how how it's handled in in South Dakota. But that's that's an assessment that we've we've given to all our juniors. And yeah, it's not to the fidelity that it's going to be next year. But I think we're at least ahead of the curve in in that we've made that commitment to our juniors previously.
I think we're ready. Some of our bright spots is are we're really in our kindergarten and eighth grade achievement. And as previously stated, kindergarten had their highest year of improvement in math from beginning to end of year. And the second highest year in improvement in literacy from beginning to end of year. In addition, junior kindergarten was piloted in three buildings, and we'll have another building that's being added next year. The goal of junior kindergarten is to help those students be kindergarten ready when they start their their year of kindergarten. And that's one of the things that we know we have an issue with is that we're seeing students at the beginning of their kindergarten year on average, two years below where we would expect them to be to start kindergarten. So that's just one of those things that we have going on right now. We look forward to seeing the results from this group that has had the benefit of junior kindergarten and seeing what's going to come of that. And so that's something that we really appreciate in the actions that the board has taken in being able to have some positive impact on that and just other steps that you all have supported in looking at some of our alternative programs and those things that are coming up that we'll be discussing.
Achievement gaps quantify how much unfinished learning remains, whereas a growth pattern helps us gauge at the rate we close those gaps. I heard a board member talk about COVID with post-COVID student data nationally, and we're seeing huge achievement gaps that schools are facing. And these gaps are really widening at the middle school level. At the end of school year twenty three, twenty four, across all grade levels, the average student will require equivalent of four point eight months of additional schooling to catch up to pre-COVID levels in reading and four point three months in math. Our eighth grade students were also a bright spot because they showed gains in both reading and math with the above average growth at the fifty eighth percentile and overall achievement improved by two percentage points. So overall, our eighth grade students is showing growth, which research shows for other schools nationally nationally is a decline. So that is a huge bright spot.
Really quick, when you talk to other districts or states, are there, I mean, we didn't lock down like California did. So is there a big difference then? I mean, I would expect that our scores wouldn't have been hampered as much as they are in other places.
So it's it's not really the the lockdown, what they're finding, the research is it's not necessarily the lockdown. It was the the trauma and the scare and the social isolation, even though we didn't go in complete lockdown, there was still social isolation in that gap, all the masks. And that's what the research is showing, especially when our littles identifying facial cues, identifying social cues. So that the what what puts them so so far behind academically is their social maturation. So that's the big part of that gap. So another one, sorry.
Um, it's kind of a con and and maybe you have to speak this. I find it pleasantly surprising. So you're talking about the K one improvement in eighth grade. So this is the first year of math curriculum. Is it ti- typical? Is it already? Oh, yeah, I guess she is in third grade. But typically, we struggle like because it's hard for teachers and staff. And so is this hopefully, if it's like one of the reasons we moved up the math change was that we were struggling. And so I understand that it could be correlational and not causation. I get that. But potentially, like that change and changing to a different math, we may be seeing some positive outcomes from that change we chose to do.
I would say yes, that I think that there are some positive things that we're seeing from the choice that you made there. A part of it, too, is that there are some staff that are working with math leadership teams, particularly at the elementary level, pulling some of those math leaders together, working with them in the evenings, and then they're taking things back to their buildings and working on that. And so that's something that Rapid City area schools is committed to is to trying to continue some of that learning and that work and making sure that we're supporting our teachers. Because I would say that what we choose, we want to make sure that we have high quality instructional materials. And that does not matter as much as the skill of our educators. And so the work that we are doing to continue to support the educators, I think there's a lot of value in that, and we're seeing some great benefit from that. And so the support that you all give Rapid City area schools so that we can make that happen, we're seeing some of the the gains from that. So thank you.
Ms. Stephenson?
Yeah, I had a question about the eighth grade achievement was. So the eighth grade achievement is compared to the eighth graders last year, right? Not compared to how these kids did as seventh graders?
It's for this year, eighth grade.
Right. So.
How they scored against us this year?
Correct. About the growth or the the increase from whatever forty, if it went from forty eight to fifty two. It's based on last year's eighth graders got forty eight. This year, the eighth graders got fifty.
On the scorecard, that is yes. But we're talking about this year, eighth grade is at the fifty eighth percentile, and I believe on NWA, they're at the fifty eighth percentile and fiftieth is considered proficient. So we put them on to celebrate as a bright spot because they are exceeding the national scores for NWA.
That is great.
And that goal that we set for the math is when we're looking at our students, we're comparing their own scores from the beginning of year to mid-year to end of year. So we saw that for them.
Okay, okay. And can you point to anything that happened that was causal for that? Like, it was it? Can you say, because we did this differently this year, we think we're seeing this result? Or is it just?
There's a number of things that we do put into place, and some of them are support for new math teachers at the middle school level, some extra coaching that they get. And then again, it would be the math leadership team coming together regularly to talk about. Yep, to talk about those things and, you know, what's going on and and how all of those pieces work together and doing that on an ongoing basis.
Well, I think that's great. Thank you for sharing that bright spot.
And I would just add to that, I think our emphasis on professional learning communities does support the work we're doing. And I think that's part of the positive results.
So a second bright spot is a culture shift in Rapid City area schools and culture meaning people are walking into the buildings, they feel it's a safe place to be, they recommend our schools to to others. Uh, we are are being, we as a DDL are very, very mindful, we score ourselves against how um you know, those surveys as well. Are our teachers happy? Are our principals happy? Do they feel supported? Do they feel safe? Do they are, do they feel we're approachable, how that looks? And that culture is increasing and then and that's a good thing. And they know that we are addressing those things. And as um Director Byte alluded to, we brought in um Jessica Hannigan. She is the um au- co-author of this book, Behavior Academies. Jessica came in to Rapid City Area Schools and uh trained um over a hundred and fifty of our educators, K twelve. And every single school, all twenty-two schools had representation in a team um at the training where we're going to look at the Behavior Academies and implementing them. Uh, each a building has the autonomy to implement them in a way that's um culturally and meeting their school culture appropriate for them to address the needs of their their schools. And we're excited about this. And the buildings are excited about this shift in really addressing this as a holistic approach instead of always a disciplined approach.
And then the third bright spot, we've talked about it already, is that better data collection entry and that reporting consistency. I think it is going to help us get better data to really look at what's causing what is what is making an impact once we have better data to look at.
Um, not tonight, but I think at some point it'd be good to learn more about the Behavior Academies and what those are and
When we bring Jessica back, we'll be, we'll have her back as a guest again next year. When we do, I'll be sure to invite each of you. If you would like to come sit in on that training, we would love to have you.
Um, a question that we already, we always have is are we using the right data to measure the pillar? As student pillar champions, we'll be taking a closer look at our goals and our data sources to make sure that we're getting the most accurate picture of student achievement. Um, the South Dakota Department of Education offered school districts the opportunity to have a academic assessment audit, a check to make sure that the assessments we're using are meeting our needs, that we are not over assessing and that we don't have assessment gaps. Um, we have accepted that offer of assistance and when we know more about the plan of how that's going to be implemented, we'll be letting you know.
And to round us out this evening, yay, best for last. Uh, our final barrier, uh, we know that the number one um uh indicator of academic success for any child is our our parent caregiver involvement and how that looks. So we're going to be evaluating at our level, are we providing the right support for our schools? For our parent and guardian engagement, a few things that we've already put in place, we've already con- uh contracted with Black Hill Special Services this last year and this coming year for all title schools that um Black Hill Special Services will come in and conduct two of their three family and kid community engagement nights, taking some things off the plates of the teachers and uh administration, uh allowing for a greater opportunity for maybe some steam evenings and those types of things. And then also, uh Director Roberts and I and her team wrote and finished, submitted uh the literacy grant, bless you. The the literacy grant, uh three point one million dollar grant that was um released to Rapid City Schools um, six weeks ago that we were required to apply for. And so we have submitted that application, providing a tremendous support as well as six uh district literacy parent engagement evenings each year for the next four years. So we're looking forward to supporting um parent and guardian engagement and really evaluating the effectiveness and how that looks. And maybe thinking outside the box of how to bring some extra people in and how to um really uh enhance that involvement and engagement.
All right, I'm gonna bring this to closure. I I do want to say uh regarding the the student pill- pillar, hopefully you can see uh the impact of the uh OCR resolution that we worked on for the previous year and in in the work that um was represented here. Uh, I think that's important to note. So a- as we kind of reflect on on our year and um this, this is a lot of information and I understand that, but we also bring it at a at a a high level. And that's our responsibility is to bring it at at that level uh for you to uh review and digest and uh process. So um, a lot of our work then is is communicating um to our building levels and and support, bringing that support that we've talked about there. I I think it's it's evident that our strategic plan is serving as a roadmap. I put that on here um, for sustainable system-wide improvement. I I think that's important. I think that's why you you have it in place. Uh, and we want to be clear in adhering to that. Uh, through each of the pillars, we have clear signs of advancement um to demonstrating when we do align and when we act with purpose. Uh, on the other hand, uh, we're also very clear and I don't think we're afraid of the things that don't go well uh or the things that are just really unclear to us. Uh, and I think that's all part of that system-wide improvement and trying to find what does better look like and when we're not certain that this is the right metric um or that this is really of value. Uh, so I still think even though we might be two years into this, we're still learning a lot of that and and hopefully you can understand that. Um, but we are committed to uh the feedback loops. Uh, I mentioned uh that a little bit in and I think our annual surveys and then through the rounding process. In coming from each of our pillars, really not just the communication pillar, but I think that is one way to really grow as a district. And we're gonna lean into that that work. Uh, we're gonna keep um really getting on our our data and trying to do that so that we can show uh hopefully measurable growth, but also again, not being afraid of what the data is telling us so that we can ho- hopefully pivot uh accordingly. And and doing so, all the, also we can support our students and our staff and and really uh be an organization of of excellence. My last bright spot for the night, I I wanted to reiterate and I've said this previous meetings when when I've shared out survey results. We shared, uh, we had fifty-six questions between the parent caregiver employee experience and student survey, fifty-six questions. We had positive growth on fifty-four of the questions. So whether that means we actually met, as you saw tonight uh or not, but we did make progress and that's something we want to be proud of and we want to uh still dig in and and try to keep keep moving on. Um, so I think as a district, that's super important. And I um, I want to throw a shout out to uh our teams here tonight. They did a tremendous job this year in in working with uh each other. There's a lot of collaboration that goes on. And uh really uh drilling that down, um, it's it's amazing how much we meet and how much we talk about this stuff and trying to bring it here, but also trying to scale it from from this building uh out outward throughout the district. And and I think you all can can see that that is a unique challenge, uh, but we're gonna keep keep at it. And uh, so I want to just uh thank the pillar champions uh for the work. Um, I want to thank you, Board, for uh how you um ask us really good questions and how you challenge us. At the beginning of the year, um, I don't know if you remember way back to the retreat, um, but I had mentioned that the strategic plan is one of the key ways that you hold us accountable to the work that we do and the advancement of this district. Uh, and so this is um one follow-up to that. And and hopefully you keep uh doing that and leaning on us so that we can be better uh to better serve uh our students and our community. And uh, all in all, uh, I think as we monitor uh the strategic plan, uh, I I think we can pivot and I think we can keep doing great things. So I'll bring it to a close and uh just say thank you for spending an evening with us and and walking through it with us. Um, really proud of that that team and all of them, not just that team. Want to be clear on that. Uh, so, thank you, Board, and that is our end of year report.
All right, any final questions or comments about your pillars? Um, I would like to recognize that uh this is the first time that we've used this process from beginning to end. And so with any pride, um, when I I was talking to Mrs. Clapham's about making collard greens. And uh, when I first started making collard greens and I asked my wife how they taste, she's like, um, and we're honest in our marriage. So uh, she's like, they're not like my grandma's greens. And so I kept trying and trying and trying and now um, I've gotten to grandma's status. And so I say all that to say that as we do this over these um next couple of years, that will get better and better. One of the things that I I liked hearing in the report are the the recognition of the dis- different um, adjustments that will be made to what data is used and why it's used. And and again, that's part of the whole process, that it's, this is not a stagnant stagnant system, but it's growing and moving and and getting better and better. So thank you for all the hard work, appreciate it and start from the beginning again, so next year. All right. All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session one dash two five dash two point one and two point.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, please say no. All right, we are officially in executive session. I think uh we'll take a minor break. Koi, um, Kelsey, if you can hear me, if you can come in and we'll visit with Kelsey, Koi, and then we'll call.